Welcome everyone to today's city council meeting. It is April 6, 2021. So, welcome. We are grateful to have you joining us as we continue to hold electronic meetings. Welcome to the members of the public who may be watching our usual video feeds online. And even though, as always, we, as always, it's the last year and a half or so, we are not in person. This meeting is still considered an open and public meeting. As many of you know, there is no public comment during a work session. However, please join us for the 7:00 PM formal meeting tonight to share any of your comments. Your feedback is however, always welcome and you can share that with the city council anytime by mailing us at PO Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah 84114, or emailing us at council comments at slc gov dot com, or by calling our 24 hour phone comment line at 801-535-7654. We will now move to our work session items. Our first item on the agenda is an update from the administration. I will go ahead and, Madam Mayor, thank you for joining us as always. I will go ahead and turn the time over to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Always glad to have this opportunity to give you some updates on the urgent matters that we're facing. With regard to COVID and the end game legislation that seeks to end that statewide mask mandate on Saturday, April 10, except for in schools and in gatherings of over 50 people where social distancing can't be maintained. That legislation also set forth some requirements that when they're met will require the expiration of all public health orders that relate to COVID. The states, which are the state's 14 day case rate is less than 191 per 100,000 people. The second is that the statewide seven day average ICU utilization is less than 15%. And third is when the Department of Health provides notice that 1,633,000 prime doses of COVID vaccine have been allocated to the state of Utah. The state on average has met the first two thresholds already with about 9% COVID related ICU utilization in the hospitals and a case rate of 177 per 100,000. In Salt Lake City, though, we still have three zip codes where the case rate is higher than that 191 threshold. In 84101, it's at just over 210 per 100,000. In 84103, it's 214. And in 84111, it's 197 per 100,000. Vaccinations in the county are at 13.25% of the county residents are partially vaccinated and just over 19% are fully vaccinated. We don't have specific vaccination data for most of our zip codes, but we know that in 84103, 20% are partially vaccinated and in 84104, 10% are partially vaccinated. If there aren't any questions on that data, I'm going to move on to the community commitment program updates. The Rio Grande Resource Fair was held on March 30. Salt Lake County Health Department provided 45 one-shot Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccines. Our justice court heard 30 cases and the third district court heard 10 cases down there. Five people took up shelter bed offers during that resource fair. And a resource fair on the Fleet Block was just held yesterday. The providers include the Y, or YWCA, I should say, Asian Association of Utah, Valley Behavioral Health, Odyssey House, Department of Workforce Services, and the VOA. Our Salt Lake City Justice Court heard cases and a few volunteer defense attorneys donated their time as well. The Salt Lake County Health Department gave more one-shot COVID-19 vaccines yesterday. So camp cleaning and closure will be completed on the Fleet Block in the next week and in the interim, service providers will continue to do that outreach they've been doing. I also want to mention that today we were really excited to announce the expansion of the downtown ambassador program. Thank you, Councilmember Johnston for making the time to be there. And that's an expansion. If you go to look at our contract with the Downtown Alliance and that contract talks about what is the downtown of Salt Lake City. That downtown's been growing and downtown needs have been growing for a long time. So this is an exciting extension where we've expanded the ambassador program along the North Temple Corridor. And the Downtown Alliance will be managing these three new additional ambassadors through our contract with Street Plus, even though it's outside of the downtown boundary. So thanks to our Downtown Alliance partners for stretching that way. The ambassadors will be on foot in the North Temple Corridor six days a week from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. And they always work in coordination with the police department as necessary. But those hours, they can change based on the need and availability depending on the day. So it's a flexible situation. It's wonderful. And I also want to give a shout out to the Salt Lake City Police Department's Bike Squad. We have several bike squads. The one that has been focused around North Temple area and the neighborhoods north and south of there have had a tremendous 2021 so far, just since the beginning of the year. They've made 86 felony arrests in the North Temple area. They've seized 10 firearms. They have found nine occupied stolen vehicles and thousands of dollars in drug money, cash seized, and nearly 2,000 grams in illegal drugs taken off the street. So wonderful work Bike Squad and welcome to the Downtown ambassadors who are coming out to North Temple now. We have an update on policing that I believe Chief Brown and Captain Van Dongan are going to do for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. It's a pleasure to be with you again. The CCP program has been a good vehicle for us to to deliver services to those that are experiencing homelessness and those that are very vulnerable and need services throughout the department. As far as the role of the police department, I want to just reiterate that our role is to provide safety and security. And when I say that, that's safety and security for everyone. The CCC, our Community Commitment Program, our social workers and our outreach correspondent officers, this model goes out into these encampments many weeks ahead of time to make sure that we can, or at least try to get people connected to services. And we do a good job and they work very well with the other service providers, VOA and other partners in the community to make sure that we're helping people to whatever it might be. The whole idea is to connect the dots, help people get the assistance and services they need that they may be able to get out of this lifestyle. But the other part of it is safety and security for those that are out there. There are a lot of predatory criminals that kind of use the homeless as a shield to operate and to distribute drugs, to assault, to do a lot of illegal activities. And so our officers through directed outreach or directed enforcement, we will go after those that are selling the drugs that are using, that are, you know, spewing this poison into our community and into this very vulnerable population. And so we make arrests in that capacity. Also, when it comes to when we do a camp relocation or an abatement, many times we go out with the health department to make sure that we can post and give people adequate notice that the camps will be abated. But on the day of the abatement or the relocation, our job is to make sure that we can do it safe and safely for everyone. That includes the health department employees that are to do this work. Our vantage services team that goes out and does great work in helping to clean up these areas. And so in the big picture, a police department, like I say, our goal is always to help help those in need, but also to provide safety and security for every part of the CCP plan. And we continue to do that week after week. And there's a lot of good work that's being done behind the scenes that people don't see. Any questions on that? Well, thank you.
It doesn't look like it, Chief. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, was there another update that you had for this first agenda item?
No, thanks. Sure.
Thank you. We will next go to our update on racial equity and policing. Our council staff member, policy analyst Allison Roland is here and I also saw some members of the commission here. And so we can introduce them, Allison, when you are ready. Moises, I see you popped up. Thank you so much for being with us today. Nicole, hi, it's good to see you. And before I turn the time over to Allison, I just want to say that I really appreciated Reverend Davis. Thank you for being here. I really appreciated the the written briefing and the recommendations from the subcommittee is the amount of work that you can tell you all are doing is so greatly valued and appreciated. And the recommendations are exactly what I believe that this council is looking for and what we need to make sure that we're moving this conversation forward in a positive way. So thank you so very much. Thank you for taking time to not only be on the commission, but then to join us here today. So I will first turn the time over to Allison and then let you guys go from there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. As you mentioned, there will be recommendations from the school safety subcommittee presented today. Before we get to that, I just wanted to mention that the full R E P commission meets tomorrow, April 7th at 5:00 PM. And as always, the council members and the public can listen in. The easiest way to get on that website is probably to go, is just to Google SLC R E P Commission. So with that, I will turn it over to, as you mentioned, Commissioners Nicole Salazar Hall, Commissioner Moises Prospero. And I haven't seen Commissioner Rogelio Romero, but if he shows up, I'm sure he will be welcome as well. So Commissioners, if you'd like to go ahead, the floor is yours.
Right. Thanks a lot. I'll go ahead and get started. Basically, it'll be Nicole and I presenting and hopefully Rogelio could come and join us. He's part of our youth subcommittee. One of our superstars. And so hopefully he'll come in and correct us. And if not, I'm sure Reverend Davis will correct this as well. So just so y'all to know that, you know, there's been a lot of reform, especially with the juvenile justice. And Salt Lake PD was part of that. They went through several trainings, went to MOU. And I'm assuming y'all have seen the report that came out of Salt Lake City PD on school citations. But we want to make sure that we give them some kudos for a lot of great work that they've done. Like from 2013, 2014, you know, they had around 488 citations in the schools. And just last year, 2019, 2020, not last year, but 2019, 2020, went down to 65. That's awesome. With basically elementary citations basically becoming extinct. So from 488 to 65, that's great. And then we asked them if they could break them up into race ethnicity, since that's kind of our area. And around the country, we see the same issue that the numbers get down, but the disproportionality doesn't always, even though with African Americans and Pacific Islanders and so forth. Some of those areas did disappear with the Latino or Latinx students. There was still some some disproportionality. So, but again, the numbers are so small, so it's really great. But with the Hispanic difference, since, you know, it was two for white students versus 20 for white, non-Hispanics, for Hispanics, non-whites. And so there's still that disproportionality. But again, there was still a lot of great effort at changing that and reducing it. And they're still willing to work with us. So that's one of the better things. And one of those areas where they show that they want to work with us, they've, you know, the memorandum of understanding between Salt Lake City PD, the city and the school district will be over this school year. And so they've invited us to be part of that, to discuss some of the areas where we could contribute with or and to address racial and ethnic disparities. And they also have an oversight committee, which is brings together the SROs and the school administrators and district level as well as executiveship from police department to discuss what's going on, what's good, what's bad. Are we sticking with our M R U, M O U? Are we sticking with the law? And so they've always also invited two of us to be into that committee as well. So again, that's been really nice to be able to see that they want to partner with us, willing to learn and as well as us wanting to learn what they're doing as well. So positives, while at the same time, there's still some racial disparity, which again, I say in the literature, we see that all the time. One of the other areas that I was going to present on was the issue of school and prison pipeline, which is where we criminalize regular adolescent behavior and then refer them to the juvenile justice system or to the courts. And then from there, as they get deeper into the system, they eventually end up into the adult system. And so we're trying to stop that as much as possible from the reduction of citations, expulsion and those types of sanctions. One of the good things to be able to do is to identify our youth, our students that are at risk or already participating in delinquent behavior or in gang involved. And so great ways to be able to identify them, be able to provide services, so some intense case management to make sure that they're addressing their criminogenic needs, their needs that are related to delinquent behavior. And then be able to then follow through and make sure that they can be successful in school as well as, you know, as adults. So one of those programs is the Promising Youth Program. I don't know if y'all know, Ashley Fletcher, she's the director of it. And this is inside the police department. She's basically been running it for a while, working with police department grant writers. They're able to get two grants. One is from the Utah State Board of Education. That's used, it's a three-year grant, but every year they kind of have to make sure that, you know, they're following their goals and objectives. And then the other one is the COPS Grant, a community oriented policing grant. And that's a one year and then they could renew it for one more year. So it'll be just two years. And one year's already ran out this school year as well. So that's great. They're able to hire some folks. Get, I think they have at least three, maybe even four social workers that are still working on maybe getting a couple of more. The problem is, at first is that they were having trouble finding space. And part of it is there's a lot of movement in the PSP, but also COVID. You know, there's restrictions being able to be at schools and so forth. But now little by little, that is opening up and so they will be actually be able to be in the schools working directly with the SROs, with the school resource officers, which I just talked about, their reductions in citations. So that is a great team right there to have. It's kind of very similar to like the CIT working in the community with adults, but this is actually with the youth in the schools. Another area is that we had actually thought about maybe moving the Promising Youth Project into the city to be able, maybe it'll have more space, maybe also that may move some of the hiring faster. But when we're looking at funding, the COPS Grant would not, probably not be able to be moved. It is given directly to the police department. There may be some issues also with the State Board of Education. Plus, the SRO Sergeant, who is also supervises the Promising Youth Program, was worried that they're really, it's really early and they're not really set up. The foundation hasn't really been set up yet, which is true. I mean, they barely got their new hires. And so they kind of wanted to work with them longer. And they're able, again, find space for them up at the schools. So for now, we're saying, you know what? Yep, that sounds great. Let them stay with the PD. Maybe next year or years forward, we could check to see if that's still the best place for them to be. Or it'd be better to go with the city. So, but our recommendation is that they stay there, they get space in the schools, working with the SROs. SROs have offices at the schools and oftentimes there's other offices in the elementary schools, which would be a great place for, again, the social workers to be able to build relations with those youth. Let's see, what is another one? Oh, equipment. So they're having trouble getting equipment, laptops and all that. That issue has been addressed. But the issue of funding does worry us because again, this is soft money. It's hard to run a program and always be looking and writing grants, trying to bring in the money. And so that soft money may disappear and all of a sudden you lose your your staff, but worse is that what you lose is the confidence of those youth really believing that you're there for them. If I'm there, I'm their case manager, I'm their social worker and all of a sudden I'm gone. Hey, you're just here for the money. You left us. I worked for decades with youth and in the mental health areas and that is a huge deficit if that were to happen. So our recommendations is that, oh, once that funding, to ensure that once that funding is over, that there'll be some other kind of funding to support those staff. So it could be a continuum of care and that it just does not stop. That would include equipment too, because they're all, they are out there in the schools, in the communities, that they would need their own laptop and communication devices, such as cell phones and so forth. So they could provide that intense case management, working with the kids, but they also work with families as well. So that is probably one of our biggest ones to ensure that that program continues to go. And they have a summer program, it's really nice, a neat summer program, where they're working with a lot of the youth that have been maybe delinquent or high risk. And they've been building these relationships, these youth have been doing really well. And then in the summers, they don't want to lose all that work they've done with them, right? It's kind of like reading, right? You're reading yay for nine months and then the summer comes and your reading goes, right, crashes. Except when it comes to delinquent behavior, we definitely don't want them to go back up into that delinquent area with all this free time and then they end up in the system and, oh man, it's so hard to get them back out. So during the summer, they have a program where they have these kids, they teach them a lot of social emotional learning skills too. There's mentorship, it's activities, but they also take them out of the city. Take them up to the mountains, you know, a lot of these kids have never seen the mountains. What is all that stuff up there? And that's a great place where the SROs, the case manager and those youth can really develop a great relationship. And again, keep those kids out of trouble, right? Keep them busy, keep them busy. And academia too, they provide some academic services as well. Unfortunately, a lot of these SROs, you know, they're sent out back to patrol. There's only one or two that are allowed to go back in. Our recommendation is to be able to send all the SROs with those case managers in that summer program. Those SROs have been working with these kids the whole nine months and they are so afraid that, you know, they're going to lose these kids for three months and some of those kids will not go with the SROs or not go. They're like, nope, I've developed great relationship with, you know, take so-and-so and nah, forget it. So that would be one of our recommendations as well as that, so a program that the SROs continue as well as the case managers from the Promising Youth Program and go up there as a team, working together with these youth. And I think that's it on my side. Right, Nicole, or did I forget something? And I think that's it on my side. Right, Nicole, or did I forget something? All right. Also, next
Question from Councilmember Valdemotos. SRO is a school resource officer.
Yes, it's a school resource officer. Basically, it's the police uh that are in the schools. The the formal name is a uh for those programs are school-based law enforcement programs. And so Salt Lake City provides that program for Salt Lake City School District. It's, thank you. All right, Nicole.
Uh that that leads perfectly into the other recommendation that we have addressing the school-to-prison pipeline. I think Commissioner Prosper outlined it perfectly. In under previous administrations, there was a senior advisor on education. The most recent uh person who filled that role was Angie Doan. Um under the new administration, that uh role has not been in place. In speaking with Salt Lake City Police Department, the the school district, and in our work that we've done, we've determined that there does need to be some type of uh city employee who can act as a liaison between these three agencies. The PD, the school district, and the city. There is a lot of information sharing that should be going on that is not happening. Um and there are relationships that can be built to open those lines of communication, to ensure that that funding is flowing in the right direction and ensuring that the students of Salt Lake Cities uh are are being served adequately. So our our desire is to have a full-time employee housed under the city. We did not want to define the F T E's job description. We, in my discussions with the school board, it sounded like the the previous senior advisor on education maybe did not fulfill their needs. And in talking to PD, that same advisor role, the the job description did not fulfill the the PD's needs. So we don't want to go back to just the senior advisor on education because it obviously was not not meeting the needs of of what would really help our students. So what we do want to do is is uh create a small working group to define what that F T E would do, what their job description would be. Ideally, it would be someone who can freely uh talk with all three agencies and help develop programming. So like with the P Y P program. If if the goal is to eventually move it under under the city's umbrella, they're still going to need a lot of assistance from from the police department. There's still going to be an ongoing conversation with the police department. We need to make sure those, make sure those avenues of communication are open. With the school district, the Oversight Committee in the Memorandum of Understanding between the school district and the PD has not been able to meet as frequently as the current oversight supervisor would like that, like them to meet because of her time constraints. This F T E could potentially fulfill that role, hold meetings multiple times per year, not just twice per year, but perhaps quarterly or even more, even monthly perhaps, and help ensure those, the goals and the the issues that are raised in the Oversight Committee meetings are addressed in a timely manner. So for now, we we do not want to define it, but it is very clear that one is needed. The school-to-prison pipeline issue is very broad. It affects many different um agencies, and it is not enough for one person to with other duties to fulfill. I know currently uh Weston Clark is is attempting to fulfill that role, and and Weston is incredibly talented. He's a hard worker, but I think he does not have the capacity to do what this position really would require of him to do. Um and I really don't want to burn out Weston. I I think I think the city needs needs Weston to stay around for a very long time, as long as we can keep him for sure. See, the other issue that we we did notice was that the information sharing uh that should be happening isn't happening. What we would like to do um is to create a memorandum of understanding that outlines measurable goals for the SRO program. There currently are not measurable goals. The Memorandum of Understanding is an excellent first start, and we want to add on to it. We want to make it more comprehensive, make it so that um nobody is really caught in a place where we don't know if the program is even working. So these measurable goals will will help determine if what we're doing is is helping students, if it's harming students, or if it's just doing nothing. Our our ultimate goal, obviously, the the overarching goal is to make sure that um students are helped, that they have positive interactions with law enforcement, and we don't start them on the path of doing law enforcement as a negative. So in creating those those measurable goals, we're going to have to have a lot of information sharing between the school district and the police department. And right now, that's not happening. And of course, on the school district side, that's a bit tricky because of of FERPA. So what we we would want to do, and I'm not sure how how we're going to be able to work this, and this is something that we would want to sit down with with some of the city attorneys and maybe an education specialist, uh someone who who specializes in education law, and I will say, I do not specialize in education law. I just know purpose there, and it it protects student records, and and that's the extent of it, similar to HIPAA. But we would want to um figure out a way to ensure that the the PD and the school district are able to share information. And even if it's not sharing specific names, um specific identifying information, but something to ensure that when PD is having an encounter with a student, positive or negative, at a school that it's documented, recorded, and it's shared across all three agencies, so that we can make sure these goals are measured. Representative Sandra Hollins presented a bill at this last legislative session that would have required such information sharing and would have required such measurable goals in memorandums of memoranda of understanding between school boards and various agencies. And of course, those specific provisions were not passed, but I think they they do hold merit, and I think they would greatly benefit the city. And that's part of what this F T E would help accomplish. Do you have any questions? And I do see that, please.
I do have a question. Madam Chair, I do have a question. Um but Nicole, if you're not done with the presentation, I can ask later.
I'm done with my portion of the presentation, so questions now are great.
Okay, so I I love all of this information, and as you guys were talking about how the system works and what you eat, what what we need and stuff like. I wonder if um when Prospero was talking about the case management and um kind of losing, you know, contact with them at some point, we're trying to prevent that. If if you guys have talked about perhaps some some sort of scholarship that some of these kids could, you know, look forward to if the police department had a scholarship available for when they are out of school or, I mean, any any, you know, when they're out of school and they could go to, you know, add other, you know, additional schooling later, academics, but I was wondering if that ever came back, you know, in a way so that they they, you know, they they stay uh doing the right things that they're doing and have something to look forward to and work towards.
Did you mean a scholarship as uh for eventually they could use um for college or university? Is that what you meant, or for?
Yes, yeah, or or maybe they want to be officer, you know, police officers, or go, you know, be a paramedic or work in the fire, you know, fire, be a firefighter. So anything that would, you know, they they had something to look forward to or work to, you know, towards to.
We have not talked about that, uh and that may be something we could bring up, uh and that would be something maybe that position would 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 assist in developing. Uh I mean, there's laws, and then there's best practice. And so just because it isn't a law doesn't mean that we can't raise that bar. And so that's what this person could do. They could raise that bar and say, you know what? This is what we want to do instead, uh above and beyond what the law says. I think there was another question?
Mayor, Mayor Nicole said our our apprenticeship program is an opportunity for this too. So there you have like a devil one, I guess, um of, you know, of resources. Perhaps we can, you know, we we as a city can show that we actually do care and we do want uh people to succeed and give them the resources.
I do want to point out that Commissioner Romero Panadis is here as well to talk about peer court.
Thank you, Nicole. I was just going to do that. Chris, before we get to, actually, if you have a question on this part, then I'll turn the time over to Commissioner Romero afterwards, if that's okay, Rojelio. So Chris, if you want to ask your question?
Yeah, this uh position, would this be uh that the commission's proposing? Would this be just in the mayor's office or in community and neighborhoods? Where would this position be housed?
We were thinking it would be housed in the mayor's office. It seemed to make the most sense uh to have this position housed in the mayor's office. But we we do want the job description to be tailored to what um Salt Lake City PD and the Salt Lake City School District needs and what the city needs as well. We we don't want to hamstring anybody with a a job description that we just pulled out of a hat. But we are, we're open to suggestion too. If it's, if the mayor's office is not going to be the best fit, I think we are, we're happy to look at other alternatives. But uh at the moment, from the research we've done and the people we've spoken with, we, for now, we do believe it would be best to have it housed under the mayor's office.
I was on mute. That's one of those days. Rojelio, do you want to take over? And thank you so much for joining us today.
Hello. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Uh my name is Rojelio Romero. You know, I joined the commission trying to help um, you know, the local community. And one way I think we can really do that is by funding Salt Lake City's peer court. And if you don't know what a peer court is, it is a restorative justice program aimed at keeping students out of the school-to-prison pipeline. So this program is mainly meant for students who commit misdemeanor crimes. So students uh fight or caught with paraphernalia or anything like that, they could be sent to our program. And here in our program, we'd like um students, we want students to be able to gain new skills, be held accountable for their actions, and promote community involvement, you know. It's been around for a while. It started at West High School, you know, they started at the South Lawn there at West, and it kind of grew from there. And now we hold it at the Matheson Courthouse. Um you know, this program has been really great for many students. It gives them an opportunity to kind of safely reflect reflect on their actions and gain some new skills. One of the, one of the best things about it is that it's kind of like student-led. Students are the people who are the panelists, the court, the judge, the bailiff and everything. So they have a better understanding and a better sense of connectivity with one another. They also get to see kind of how other students live and kind of different views of life. You know, we want, you know, it's a great program, and I really believe in it, and it's it's great, you know. You know, we we've had some kind of issues this last year with some with recommendations. And over the past couple of years, we've had some issues with like getting technology, getting the right training for the students, and getting proper staffing for us, you know. Like many of the other programs, uh we have soft money. It's nothing that's consistent. We always are consistently applying for grants that kind of we either get or disappear, and it leaves us holes to kind of fill in. So um if the council could provide money for this program, you know, it's been, it's been great, you know. I really, I really believe in this program. I think it's amazing. And if we just could get some more money, some more funding, I think we could do a much better job, and I really want to see this program grow. And I want, I I hope for the best for the program. I've seen students really enjoy the program. I've seen them learn so much. One of the main things we do is the summer camp retreats. We go out to the mountains and we train them about restorative justice and learn about law and education and things like that. And the school-to-prison pipeline and what effects it has on communities. You know, and a lot of students really enjoy that, but we haven't been able to do that well last year because of COVID and the years before that, because we couldn't afford it, you know. There's also just other resources we want to be able to provide for these students. A lot of them need therapists, a lot of them needs rights to the courthouse, they need, well, they need, they just need help. And if we can provide that for them, we would be able to greatly assist them even more. You know, this program's meant to meant to keep students out of the pipeline, to schools, prison pipeline. And it's, you know, it's, oh, sorry, a little nervous. But um, or was I? But yes, I think it's a great, great program, you know. We really want to focus on our three pillars, you know, community involvement, which can be easy sometimes, but can be also be difficult. You know, we want to give the kids opportunities to learn and grow and skill development, like we said, we want the kids to be able to have um the abilities to learn, join clubs, and many of those barriers are financial, where students want to be able to, like, let's say, do a spy hop class or join a football league, you know. We want to be able to provide students with that, you know, we want them to be able to gain skills and whatever they want to be achieving in their life, you know. And we also want to hold them accountable, you know. Many times um in the criminal justice system, it is completely punitive where students walk in front of the judge, and the judge gives them their sentence, and that's it. There's no reflection, there's no, there's nothing beyond that. And it feels like they're just being pushed along and shoved on continuously, you know, as is with the pipeline. And so we just hope that you guys could add some funding to our program and help us grow and help keep the community safe together.
I want to tell you all, yeah, Rojelio before, uh you get, I want to make sure you all know that Rojelio is a volunteer for the Salt Lake Peer Court. So he's not asking money for his own pocket. He's asking money for the program itself so he can help others. He himself uh works at an after-school program at a middle school. Anybody that's worked in middle school knows how hard that can be. So and I was also part of the evaluation team uh working with the University of Utah and and found that it was an effective program. It does keep kids out of the system. And so uh we are now, right now, in the in the process of doing a qualitative study of them to see how great those volunteers are, great volunteers, just like Rojelio right there, that's that, you could see how good he is. Definitely uh something we want to um expand and and continue. Great job, Rojelio.
Thank you, Rojelio. Thank you, Moises. And I I imagine many of us that were in law school uh participated. I know I volunteered a little bit with the peer court when I was in law school, and it is an amazing program. So thank you for joining us, Rojelio, and for being a part of the, for being a part of the commission. Councilmembers, do you have any other questions for our commissioners? Andrew? And then Dan, was that a hand? Okay, Andrew and then Dan.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, thanks for the recommendations. I have a question about the metrics for uh school resource officers. Talk about the number of citations and the proportional racial disparity that doesn't, it doesn't change. It sort of decreases, but this proportion is the same, it looks like. Is that one of the metrics we're thinking of? Or do you have a list of metrics in your head already from the research that that you're thinking of behind this, or is that something that's a blank slate that potentially a new position we'll look at?
Commissioners, don't mind, I can, I can address that. Uh we're, we have that opportunity with the current Oversight Committee. When we met with them, we have the opportunity to look at the current program goals and help them to develop some criteria with which to measure the success of the program. And on top of that, we've also been developing a list of other metrics we might recommend in a future M O U, so what they can measure now and what we wait, recommend that they measure in the future. And Councilmember, we, because some of the data, like we've uh Commissioner Salazar Hall was talking about, some of the data is not quite there for for what we need to see. So that's hence the data recommendations, which then I think will get us to the place where we can measure the program a bit more effectively, which is some of the things that we've brought, run up against. So yes, we are in the process of developing those for the current M O U, and we kind of have a little extra category for what we might recommend for a future M O U, assuming that will continue to go forward.
Thank you. The the second question, Madam Chair, is just uh any sense of a base budget for peer court? Hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands?
I like that, hundreds of thousands a lot.
I'd say I think all the money would be great.
Hundreds of thousands, millions, if possible.
Just so y'all know, it it, the director, there's a director, uh and then there's a, who's a full-time, and then there's a part-time coordinator. And they have hundreds of kids going through there. And so uh because I've done several observations of that program, they they are running around uh like crazy because they have adult uh peer mentors, uh adult mentors, and they have peer mentors. So the adult ones are usually university, uh like was mentioned earlier, and then they got kids that have gone through the program are now part of the panelists. They're the ones doing the mentorship now too as well. And so somebody has to care for those. And then there's the actual panelists, and I mean, the participants themselves, those who have been referred. So it could be where it could make at least two full-time. It'd be ideal to have three full-time to assist in that.
Councilmember Johnston?
I'm s- I'm sorry?
I'm I'm wondering uh if I can say something. It looked like the mayor may wish to say something first, so I would defer to her.
Oh, thanks, Allison. Uh Madam Chair, I was just going to say that our team will look into the funding and the capacity to to grow that program and be happy to bring that back to you too.
And just in terms of a broader clarification. And just in terms of a broader clarification, the commissioners have not been asked to provide specific budget recommendations. We think it's a little beyond their, the scope of the work. They have their hands full with all of the, all of the ideas they're working with and all of the recommendations. We have told them as staff that, you know, that's what we're here for. And as the mayor said, she has a big and very competent team as well to work on.
And one thing, I don't think we may have not clarified well enough that we would like for the Promising Youth Project to work with the peer court. So they could, so like that they couldn't, the, they could say, you know what, the Promising Youth Court may have a case management plan, say, oh, this would be perfect for peer court. This kid isn't as far, but there's a lot of risk factors, and peer court would be able to support them and keep them out of the system. So I don't know if we had discussed that, please.
Thank you. Dan, did you still have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair, Madam Chair. Wonderful presentation, and I really appreciate the recommendations. I think you've got a great program here, and I think you're on the right track. On the question on the peer court is, you mentioned West High School. Do you have it also at East and Highland? Or do you, do, are you expanding to the other two high schools? And then the follow-up is, do some of the, I don't want to, those who are sitting on the peer court are sometime, are they all grade ninth to seniors? And do they rotate also? And have they been others that have been on the opposite end of the receiving end of the court so that they get a, a feel for it? Could you just explain it more to the general public?
Yes, so we have a referred youth who comes in, and they're the person who's like has committed the misdemeanor, the crime, the fire, whatever. They come into the court, and then they sit in front of the panel. And the panel consists of students who, who've gone through the program as a, as a violator of the law or whatever. And then it's also full of students who haven't done anything or just want to help. And these positions are voluntary. So, and then the students will sit in panel, they'll discuss, and then the students on panel will rec, will have a contract between the referred youth and them. And, you know, depending on what the situation was, will be dependence on what's on the contract. But one of the things that's required usually is panel duty is where, and that's where the referred youth goes, sits on the other side with the panel, and they become part of the program, and they see kind of other students' views as well. So it's not just them being there and judged, being judged as well. So they, they actually do get to join, and they do get to participate. And then for the other question is, it started at West High School, and it's for the whole Salt Lake, Salt Lake City School District. So if your school falls in the Salt Lake City School District, oh, and then we expanded to Murray last year, actually, or two years ago. So now we can get students from Salt Lake City and Murray. You know, and we hope to kind of grow the program, you know, as like we said, it's, I think it's really important, and it's very vital, and it really does, I, I see it really does help, and it really does build community within the schools.
Thank you very much. That clarified a lot of things, so appreciate that very much. I have one more question about the SRO program during the summertime. You said, in the, in the report, you talked about having just a few SROs that frosts the full summer. How many SROs do we have? And how many would you be looking at to go across the whole summer or year round, I should say?
They're supposed to have 10 SROs plus a supervisor who is a sergeant. Because of COVID and a lot of schools were not on, they hatched it. And so five right now are in different departments, whether it's patrol or property crime or so forth, and they have five right now. But now the schools are opening, they're hoping to get some of them back. Yeah, usually, our understanding is that during the summer, and, and this is the norm for, for SRO, school-based law enforcement programs around the nation is that in summer, most of the times, they just go back and they fill some of the needs of the police department. But we're trying again, do best practice. You've built a great relationship with youth. You should follow through with them. And so what we would recommend is whatever amount of SROs that are working during that school year should be allowed to, to continue that work. We understand, though, that, you know, right now, police departments are really low in numbers. And so there's always a balancing act. But we would recommend that whoever's working, the SROs that are working during the school year should continue that relationship and work with those youth during that summer program.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you so much, commissioners, for this presentation. The recommendations are incredibly helpful. And really, I think it, it sort of brings a spark to my eye that this is exactly what, as I mentioned earlier, we wanted to do. And I think what the mayor's goal in creating the commission is to really have community-based input into policymaking from the side of the council and budget-making, if you will, in some ways from the, the side of the administration. And these recommendations are really what, what we're looking at and what we're hoping for in, in this collaborative work together. So thank you so much for joining us. Thank you again for the hard work that you're doing now and that you continue to do. And we look forward to more discussions. So unless there's anything else, I want to thank you for your time today. And you certainly don't have to stick around for the rest of our very, our very long council meeting. You're welcome to, but you don't have to. Thank you for joining us. Allison, was there something you wanted to mention?
I just thought you might want to recognize two other members of the commission who are here today in support of their fellow commissioners. That's Reverend Franz Davis and Commissioner Steve Angel weird.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I said the reverend earlier, but thank you again. So thank you all for being with us today.
I just want to give a great shout out for Allison. She's an amazing support. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Thank you, Allison.
Yes, she's wonderful. Thanks for having us.
I tell everyone that we have the best staff in the country. So I think, I think it's true. So.
It's true.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
With that, council members, we are going to go to agenda item number three, which is an informational briefing on ranked choice voting. Let's see, I'm going to look at my.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Ben. I even like gave you the thumbs up that I knew that you had something. So before we get to agenda item number three, Ben, let me from the council staff has an update on the, the police audit, right?
Yes, a quick update.
I'll turn the time over to you.
A reminder that the audit scope is split into two parts, financial items and operational items. The draft audit report for the financial items was just received, and it's in your inboxes at 2:51 PM. The draft report for the operational items, the other half of the scope, is expected to be ready early next week. The draft reports include findings and recommendations for all 17 and several sub-items in the scope of work. The recommendations are expected to be a mix of administrative and legislative actions. That is, some recommendations could only be accomplished by the council. Some could be done by the mayor and the police department, and others would require coordination between both branches of city government. The draft reports will be publicly available. Staff is going to add the financial items draft report to the council website. We tentatively have a briefing scheduled to the council on both of the draft reports for April 20. And a briefing on both reports is also tentatively scheduled for the R E P Commission on April 21. So since we just got the report eight minutes ago, I, I haven't had time to look at it in detail. But we wanted to let you know we have received the financial.
Perfect. Thank you, Ben. And with that, Ben, you can just stay right there because I think you are up next for ranked choice voting along with Cindy Lou Trishman and Lauren Schaefer, both from the Recorder's Office. Obviously, Cindy Lou is our city recorder. So I will turn it over to Ben unless there's something I'm missing.
The last briefing for the council on ranked choice voting was February 16. Since then, the legislature passed House Bill 75 after multiple amendments, and the governor signed that bill. The new law allows cities to contract with other counties outside of the one they were in for election services. The other two bills about ranked choice voting did not pass in the legislative session. We have also heard that Salt Lake County Clerk Sherry Swenson confirmed ranked choice voting will be offered as an election method to cities this year. We also received three cost estimates, and the estimates are based on the election method. $119,000 for a primary and general election with traditional voting, voting by mail. This is the same thing that was done for the last municipal election. $120,000 for ranked choice voting with a primary and a general election. This is $1,000 more than the traditional election method. And it, it's important to note that primary elections are typically eliminated when using ranked choice voting. And then the third cost estimate is $72,000 for ranked choice voting without a primary. That is, only a general election would be held. So eliminating the primary under a ranked choice voting election method reduces the cost by $47,000. We also have an updated timeline. The, the deadline for the council to decide on the election method is sooner than anticipated. And this is because of several factors, including a federal law that requires notice of a primary be given to overseas and military voters by April 29. And there's also the newspaper publishing deadline, which we've been informed is April 22. So given these updated requirements, the last regularly scheduled council meeting, when the council could act on a resolution for ranked choice voting, would be April 20. This is one meeting sooner than we thought last time. There are a few policy questions in the Recorder's Transmittal, Transmittal for the council to consider. Is there additional information that the council would like before deciding on an election method? Is there enough time to raise awareness and educate the public about changing the election method to ranked choice voting? And note that the time to educate voters significantly changes whether there is or is not a primary. And then is using ranked choice voting? Sorry, my phone just went off. Those are the two main policy questions. And I'll turn the time over to Cindy Lou Trishman and Lauren Schaefer.
Thank you. Ben summed it up quite nicely. The only thing that I would add is the deadline for the newspaper publishing he mentioned of April 22 is for a publish in the Tribune. It moves to April 27 if it's for the Deseret News. It's just due to that weekly publication that those deadlines were adjusted. But I recognize that the timeline changes things for everyone. So Lauren and I are available to answer any questions. I feel like his summary was succinct and don't want to add any more that isn't of interest.
Yes, Councilmember Wharton?
Yeah, thank you. So I know that there's still some state funding that's available for voter outreach and education about this. Are, is, but one of the other concerns that, that County Clerk Sherry Swanson talked about was if the ballot was, were to be multiple pages, is there any funding available for Salt Lake City for that? Or would we, as a council, need to plan for the possibility that if we adopt this, that we need to have extra money and how much extra money ready to do multiple pages if that is the case?
So it's our understanding that the funding at the Lieutenant Governor's Office is correct for education only. So if there were multiple pages of a ballot, there would need to be additional funding considered. Yes.
And do we need to, like, plan for that now if we want to support and do this? And then is there any, is there any other additional cost to doing a ranked choice vote election as opposed to non-ranked choice vote election with the county clerk?
So as far as whether or not you'd have to come and, or whether or not we'd have to come and ask for more funds, I, I really don't know that we'd be able to answer that until we were able to see how many candidates were for each position, which if by ranked choice voting, if ranked choice voting is selected, candidate declaration moves to August. So then we're into August phase. And, and if we needed more funds, we'd need to come back to you. That's true. And that, that's the best method that I can think of. As far as your second question, are there any other costs associated with ranked choice voting? The county recorder or Sherry Swanson's office has indicated that there's a $10,000 fee to be distributed among the cities who select ranked choice voting. So the estimate provided was with a consideration of depending on how many cities in Salt Lake County actually select ranked choice voting, we could pay an extra 1,000, or we could pay an extra 6,000. It's just going to depend on how many cities elect to participate.
Do we know?
10,000 if we were the only city, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And Lauren, could you confirm what cities in Salt Lake County have elected?
Currently, in Salt Lake County, it's Draper and Riverton. But with communications with other cities, it sounds like two more may opt in. They're just not sure yet. So we theoretically could be sharing it with at least four other cities, but right now just two.
Chris, did you have another question?
Um, that, that was my question is what other cities are there? But so then I had another question based on what Cindy said. So the, the candidate declarations would, you could declare your candidacy all the way up until August? And then it would just be the single vote in November? Is that right?
Yeah, so it's actually.
A primary?
So in, in traditional voting method, when there's a primary, right, your candidacy dates are declared in June, the first week of June. If you select to do ranked choice voting, because generally that primary is eliminated, not always, like, it's an optional to hold a primary with ranked choice voting. But if you eliminate the primary ranked choice voting shifts your candidacy declaration dates to August. So it's not open necessarily from June to August. It's just those seven days in August that we have. And Lauren, I, I'm trying to just pull up the timeline exactly. But the specific dates in August for candidate declaration of ranked choice voting is August 17. August 10 to the 17.
If I could add something, campaigns can be open, essentially, anyone could start campaigning as of today if they opened a campaign finance account. So candidates would get all of that time until August to campaign if we did not hold a primary. And then in August, they'd just have that week to formally declare their candidacy. But theoretically, anyone at any point from now on could begin campaigning and raising and spending funds.
So can you, oh, sorry. And Cindy, can you think of any reason why we would want to also, to have, to do ranked choice voting and to do a primary? Does that, does that make sense? I mean, isn't one of the or the arguments in favor of ranked choice voting that you can eliminate the primary? Or do you see other, do you see a benefit in still having a primary?
I, I don't see the benefit of having a primary. However, there are some candidates who build their campaign finance on the primary, right? This, this, it's traditionally how things have gone for so long. It's really difficult to anticipate a whole new lens. Like, we're just putting on a whole new pair of glasses, right, of how this would work. But I, I struggle with the adoption of ranked choice voting, including a primary, because I don't see the But I, I struggle with the adoption of ranked choice voting, including a primary, because I don't see the fiscal uh, benefit. And I also see that, that candidate declaration period stays the same in June. So there's, although you're ranking in the primary, there, I guess that's the benefit is you're ranking in a primary. So you get familiar with how to do it and then you get to rank in the general. It's a tough call and I think there are many elected officials across the state who are trying to figure this out as well.
Thank you, Cindy Lou. I see a couple of their hands up, but I was informed that perhaps um, Mayor Mendonhal had her hand raised. Don't see her, so.
Sorry, I just need to unlower my hand, actually.
Okay, sorry, Madam Mayor, just wanted to make sure if you did have something that we were made, not skipping over you. Um, with that, uh, Darren and then Andrew, those were the hands I saw in that quarter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I guess my question was, I, it makes sense that the fiscal impact to the city would be lower without the primary. Do we have data about the, about candidate spending um, with or without a primary? Uh, cause in one hand, I could see candidates that are eliminated during a primary would stop spending as opposed to everyone spending up until November. But another hand, another case, you're just extending this, the election season rather than shortening it. Do we, is there data available for that or would it just be all guesses?
So Lauren looked up some information yesterday and we also spoke with individuals uh, uh, from ranked choice voting Utah to see if they had data just outside of the state that has practiced ranked choice voting. We don't have that hard information just yet, like those specific numbers, but it is something we're looking into bringing back to you. I think Lauren can speak best to the campaign finance piece because that's the difficulty with finding the numbers. So I'm gonna defer to Lauren now.
Yeah, I, yesterday I went through Payson and Vineyard because they're the two who did it in twenty nineteen's campaign finance, just like the final disclosure. And it looks like their candidates roughly spent about a thousand dollars total. Um, and looking at two cities within Salt Lake County the same year who did not do ranked choice voting, um, I looked at Bluffdale and Harriman and most of those candidates spent um, around five to six thousand on average. So the difference in their spending is a lot more um, for candidates who do not do ranked choice voting. Candidates that do ranked choice voting tend to spend less, just on like a preliminary glance. Um, I contacted the Lieutenant Governor's Office to see if they had any data on it, but it looks like they haven't been collecting any data on that. So it's just what I can pull from campaign finance reports from other cities. But just at a glance, it looks like uh, ranked choice voting candidates spent less than regular.
That's great. Madam Chair, if I might, I, I just don't, I was, um, I'm not sure I entirely understand what a ranked choice voting election with a primary looks like. Do we, you take the whole field, narrow it down to three and rank them then? Or what is, how does that work? Or would you narrow it down to two and just do a traditional general election?
A great question. Uh, the way that the primary works is I believe you rank and go from, to the top two. So then you go from the top two into the general to rank those top two. That's why the primary is like this debatable space of whether or not it actually uh, like implements the intention of ranked choice voting, which is to essentially provide people the opportunity to choose whose first, second, third, fourth, or fifth even, you know, instead of just being drawn to two candidates alone.
Andrew?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Uh, one question, Cindy, is there anything in our current um, statute? If we were changed to a, I'll say in my, in my voice, a ranked choice voting without a primary that would impact candidates for election this year who have already declared um, or set up their campaign finance?
So because the declaration period isn't open, sorry, Lauren, did you, were you answering that?
I, it's happy to answer or not.
I couldn't, I thought maybe I talked over you. I didn't mean to. So because the declaration period for a candidate is actually not until June, whether we do, you know, in traditional. So if someone's open to campaign finance committee, anyone can open that anytime in this election cycle. So we have some that carried over from last year or the year before who had an open campaign. Those committees remain open until it strikes a zero balance and they officially close their campaign committee. But their candidacy is not declared until that week's time. So Andrew, I don't know that I'm answering your question. Could you repeat it for me, please?
I, I think you did. I was just concerned that a few folks in some of our districts who are running this year have open campaign finance committees, but it sounds like that's fine. That's not impacted by this at all. It would just give them more time to declare, essentially when the declaring period is later in the year. And Madam Chair, I would just, personally, right now, I would uh, wholeheartedly support um, committing to ranked choice voting this year without a primary though. Uh, I think we're gonna need as much time as possible to educate everybody, to set things up. And I don't, I don't see the purpose of a primary for them to go towards ranked choice voting.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? I have a question about, uh, I didn't see any hands up, so I'm gonna go ahead and go if that's okay with everyone. A question about the education and outreach. One of the things we heard from Sherry when she came and spoke to the council was really, um, I think we heard this there. I've heard it several times. So if it wasn't in a council meeting, I apologize. But um, just about the amount of education it took when we went to mail-in ballots. And um, you know, we had such a high voter turnout last year and, and I'm grateful for that high turn voter turnout. Um, I, I don't want to diminish it, any of that. I'm, I, right now, I'm either way with ranked choi- ranked choice voting. Um, but I want to make sure that we have sufficient time for education and um, really making sure that people don't feel intimidated by a new system when voting this year. Uh, do Cindy Lou or Lauren, do either of you know roughly how much time or money went into the public education when we went, when we moved primarily to mail-in ballots?
So I know the information Ben provided me.
Or Ben?
Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
I can answer this one, Madam Chair, because I was on the Vote by Mail Public Education Committee back in twenty fifteen. It was an internal, interdepartmental committee. And there were, there were six months of intensive outreach. And we had sixty-six thousand dollars that the council provided. And at pretty much every week, the committee was talking and was meeting every other week. And it was as broad and inclusive of outreach as we could think of at the time. So we sent a postcard to every household in the city, about eighty thousand households. We did targeted advertising on digital platforms from radio to social media. We included newspapers, both their online as well as their print publications. We contacted community organizations to ask if they were familiar with it, if we could provide explanations to them, either in person or provide materials that they could distribute. So community councils, uh, religious groups, business associations, really anyone that would uh, take up the phone call or answer our email, we were happy to provide them information. We also translated materials into Spanish. We uh, handed out promotional uh, posters, pins, uh, stickers. We, we tried to come at it from every angle we could. And there was a lot of interest. The school district said if we provided them handouts, they could add it into their regular uh, information packets that students take home. So that was another way to get parents and families involved. It, it was a successful effort by most of the feedback we heard. Uh, we wish we could have done more, but we feel like we did a good job.
Perfect, thank you. And then the money from the Lieutenant Governor's Office, how, how do we get that? Is that for any city that, is it allotted to any city that chooses to do ranked choice voting or do we have to apply for it or?
I'm gonna defer to Lauren on this. She's actually spoken to the office about the money.
Um, so after speaking with Justin Lee, the Director of Elections, he basically said they have two hundred thousand available and what they're planning on doing is once they know how many cities are gonna opt into the program, and they're going to create their own statewide, general ranked choice voting, like educational materials so that any municipality can use them. So they'll make, it sounds like videos, handouts, brochures, things that look like that, that we can then take those files and disseminate them to our own municipality. So they're gonna make a whole bunch of just Utah-specific ones. And then every city who's opted in gets free range of all of those materials.
But we would most likely still it, let's say it's print material. Are they going to print it for us? Or is it, it's sort of like, here's what we've created, you need to go print it yourself? So we'd still need to allocate some amount of money to the public outreach and education for this. We would just have access to, we wouldn't have to spend uh, people power in creating necessarily and creating the um, the, the the document itself or the video itself, unless we wanted something more Salt Lake City or Salt Lake County specific.
Yeah, exactly. And they, um, I know that some of the stuff they created for Vineyard and Payson, it'll essentially look like that. It's coming from their marketing firm. Um, and their marketing firm's just gonna try and make it as easily digestible as possible for voters so that it applies to everybody. But yeah, we'd have to print, to my understanding, we'd have to print it ourselves. However, um, I know that they have the two hundred thousand available and typically just from my experience from working in that office, and I'm not promising anything, but if not a lot of people do it, I'm sure there's other options there that they are willing to work through with cities. But it just kind of all depends on who joins and how much funding they have.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers, are there um, are there any other questions to this? Chris?
Um, mine's just more of a statement. I, I think that uh, I've gotten a lot of feedback on this from residents who really want um, Salt Lake City to tend, to take the lead and, and make this step. Um, I think we've done a lot of, um, we've let out on a lot of election reform issues before. And I don't necessarily think that vote by mail should, um, I don't think we should necessarily use that as a bellwether because it was seven years ago. And I think a lot more people are on social media now and are, um, we have a lot more uh, opportunity to connect and educate voters. And I think if we make this decision, um, then the, the candidates themselves can be out and educating voters when they're knocking doors, um, and explaining, um, letting people know that this is coming up. But I don't know, I, I, I think that, that we should take this step. I still think that there might be some um, value in doing a primary, just the first year that we do it, just to like ease people into this new system, but I could be, really be persuaded either way. I think the, what I do think we have to do is, I do think we should, we should make this step. And I think we should, we should vote on it um, now so that we can get started. I know that there's also fundraising or some funding available from national groups that could help us um, with um, supplement the, the costs of educating voters if we have to adjust for the fact that we're gonna be sharing with other cities from the, from the LG budget, I mean. But I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Ben, what procedurally do we need to do? Yes, James?
Sorry. Uh, I just want to point out that districts one, three, five, and seven are up for election this year. So it's kind of hard for me to say, let's move forward with this when we have Chris is up for reelection, right? You're seeking reelection. Have you said that? Uh, Darren, you have? Are you seeking reelection? Amy, how about you? You don't know yet. Okay, great. Um, well, I'm not. So I'm okay. I feel comfortable voting on this, but I really don't. I think that it needs to be done in an off-year. Uh, and specifically while we educate the rest of the city to talk about it. I think we discussed this while it was up for mayoral election, um, and that we're gonna come back to it. But that happened because of COVID and everything else that happened last year. So I would much prefer looking at this at a point of view, and I'll vote on it now, saying, no, we're not gonna do it. But as a new council comes on and those new elected officials that did it the old way can sell everybody on how to do it the new way. So I just don't feel comfortable doing it this time as we have three seats, possibly four. So that, that's just my personal opinion.
Yes, Dan?
I'll just respectfully disagree with James. I, I think this is the right time to do it. And I think we also have a residents that are uh, able and willing to take this on. And it's not a very difficult process. I think we're trying to make this a bigger uh, problem than it is, and I think it's the right decision. And uh, there's no need for the primary because I think that's why we're doing the ranked choice voting. And this is probably the best time to do it. So that's my opinion. And I think there's a lot of people out there that are really looking forward to it.
So Ben, um, procedurally, what do we need to do to vote on this simply? I, I don't think we can, it would have to be in a motion in a formal meeting, would it not? We can straw poll it here, but
You can straw poll today and then it would be scheduled for a vote on a resolution on April twentieth. And then if that is successful, it would be notified and shared with the Lieutenant Governor's Office.
Jen Bruno just popped in.
Yeah, I was just gonna say procedurally, you have the option to straw poll today, but you can also choose to not straw poll today and wait until the night of the vote to indicate your feelings if
So either way, we are, this is on the formal meeting for a vote on the twentieth?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't need a straw poll today. People can voice their opinions and give a vote and, and their vote on the twentieth. Great. Then I'm not gonna look for a straw poll. Um, any other comments on ranked choice voting or questions for our lovely panelists? Um, yes, Darren?
Yeah, I'll just state my opinions on it. I think it's the right move and that we should go this direction. But I also do, for myself, feel a little bit what James is saying about, it feels a little awkward for me to make this decision. Um, so I would, I would be okay with what Chris suggested as doing ranked choice voting with a primary as a way to ease into it. I would also be okay with waiting until next year. However, um, I think overall I'm supportive of it. And so I think talking through some of those logistics and details and if it is ethical for us to make the decision in an election year is, um, I, I'm not convinced it is or is not, but I'm, I'm open to that discussion. But I, I think overall and in general, we should move this direction.
That's an interesting question, Darren. I mean, I like sort of the ethics of making this decision as a potential candidate.
And I've tried to reach out to my constituents to ask the question. Everyone has been supportive of it and I haven't. I've tried not to indicate my position on that um, for that reason. And everyone I've heard from is supportive of it. So I think, yes, we need to move that direction. But I do have that sort of question about in an election year, is it the right time? So.
And Jen popped in again, so I'll, I'll turn it to Jen Bruno.
No, I, I don't have an answer, but I'll say in the past, we have asked about the council because in the past, the councils had to vote on allocating funds for the contract for the county to run the election. And council members who were running were cleared to vote on that. I think it might be worth the second round with the Attorney's Office just to double check on this particular issue, just to make sure. But in the past, it's been allowed.
Chris?
I, just one quick thing is that uh, I mean, it's always gonna, it's always gonna impact whether we make the decision on an election year or a non-election year. Like it's always gonna have an impact on the next election, whether it's, you know. And so I think though, we have to um, be wary of the fact too, that, you know, we get a lot of input from uh, residents on municipal election years. And that's because that's when they want us, that's when they're engaged and they're telling us that they want to make their decision. So I, I feel like um, we should, we need to listen to that and uh, and listen to the comments that we're getting them that are calling for and listen to the comments that we're getting them that are calling for it. Well, actually, we're calling for it two years ago, but are calling for it again now. So.
But I think to that point and to James's point, we had planned on looking at this uh after the mayoral race last year, or excuse me, in 2019. And then 2020 hit like a, like an earthquake hurricane pandemic and there were other things. And so I, I see your point, but I see James's point that you, we, and when I have, we've heard a lot about ring choice voting since I've been on the council and, and I'm supportive of it, but I, I can understand sort of all of the different facets and issues where could easily put this on an agenda for December. So then every, the election is over and and then people are prepared for the, whatever happens in the upcoming years. Um, just, I, I mean, I see all the points of it. So I think it's good to have these discussions and see where we're at and then vote on it in a couple of weeks. Yeah, go ahead, Darren. And then I'm going to have you be, um, I'm going to look at the agenda time real quick. You go ahead, Darren, but you might need the last, the last person.
Okay, thanks. Procedurally, we can't have four council members recuse and still pass something, right? You, we have to have at least four. Okay.
You must have a quorum. You're correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, good discussion. Uh, thank you Cindy Lou and Lauren and Ben for your vast wisdom on voting and elections. Um, and we will, this is set for the formal meeting on the 20th. So we'll take it away then. Um, that moves us on to agenda item number four, which is um, the ordinance of idling of vehicles. And I'm going to turn the time over to Sam Owen. And Debbie Lyons is also here from Sustainability, I believe. Debbie, yep, there you are. Hi Debbie. Um, so go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the council previously adopted an idle free ordinance via city code 12.58 called idling of vehicles. The ordinance enables the city to assess a civil penalty against persons idling vehicles in ways that are prohibited by the ordinance after three violations. So that's three warnings and then um a civil penalty can be assessed. And that's for things like idling a vehicle over a certain amount of time under particular circumstances. There are also a number of exceptions to those circumstances um based on like the health and safety of the occupants of the vehicle. In other words, if it's too cold outside uh and there is a young occupant of the vehicle, then the ordinance provides an exception for idling under those conditions. So it's not uh across the board ban of idling vehicles under all circumstances. There are a number of carve outs that um are preserved in concept in the ordinance amendments. So in 2019, the Utah State Legislature amended the law in a way that allows the city to assess penalties for violation of the ordinance after just one warning rather than the previously required three warnings. So this proposed amendment would bring the city code into alignment with those changes in the state law and um, and then like I referenced earlier, make a number of other changes that are functionally just cleanup and housekeeping in the ordinance. So with that, Madam Chair, I would turn it over to the administration for questions and other context.
Um, just in addition to what Sam said, um, you might have some questions about uh how this has been enforced. It's enforced on a complaint basis. Um, and I learned from public services that they have issued in the last two years, 17 warnings, first warnings and no citations in the last two years. Um, so it is um following the intent of what the state initially wanted cities to do, and that is use it as an educational uh piece to, to be able to um uh let, let residents know that idling is, is not good for the environment. It's not good for our health and um it is against the law. So um, that I, with that, I don't expect that this will require any needed enforcement um enhancements or, or generate any increased or decreased revenue either way. Um, it's just, as Sam mentioned, kind of coming in line with what the state law allows for and um, some of those exemption language has been cleaned up a little bit to match what other cities are, are having their ordinances so that we have consistent language in all of the cities um with these, these ordinances. Since we passed it in 2012, I think um over nine cities have passed similar ordinances. So we're just coming into alignment with, with, with what is uh practiced across, across the valley. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Sam. Council members, do we have any questions here? Andrew?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. Let me just under policy question one. Right? It was about the amendments um and a provision that allowed for the health and safety of the driver or passenger. Is that in the amended statute now you propose, it's being proposed or is that being removed?
No, it's still in there. It's item B. Um, and it allows for idling for the health and safety of the passenger or any service animals. And that is intended for those hot and cold um situations, passengers in, in the, in the vehicle that need um extra comfort. Um, so that is still in there. What we did do is we took out the exact reference to the temperature at the Salt Lake City Airport. Um, that has been problematic because this, if, if somebody were to appeal, you know, you have to bring in all the documentation about what was the temperature of the airport and, you know, what if that was different than what the temperature, you know, in, in the middle of the city is.
And is this intended to be educational still or are we really moving this to enforceable first time?
Um, I think it still is educational just because um there is still one warning and we, we're not really issuing second warnings at this point. Most people get the message after the first warning.
Thank you.
Council members, any other questions? I don't see any other questions, Sam. I don't see on our agenda what the next steps are here. Can you?
Ma- uh, Madam Chair, it's at your discretion. So if, if council members are prepared to move ahead, then staff can go ahead and schedule us for uh for a formal meeting adoption. Um, again, at your discretion.
It looks like there are no questions and I would say let's get her done.
Can I bring up one more thing for you?
Yeah, of course.
I, I heard from the hearing officers this morning about this. Um, and one thing that they said to me was that in item B, that um flexibility for, for health and safety, there already exists some language in another section of this code that they refer to that um talks about imminent or irreparable injury to a person or property that anybody can appeal based on that. And they prefer that language actually. Um, and they would prefer not to have any reference to health and safety in the ordinance, um in this section of the ordinance. So I wanted to bring that up to you um to see if you wanted to discuss that any further. They, they said that this reference to health and safety is a little bit um more difficult, I think, for them to interpret if somebody were to appeal. Um, that being said, I don't know that we've ever had an appeal or an idling citation. Um, and we haven't had an idling citation in the last two years. So.
Council members, does this change? It, would you want to see different language within the ordinance or have this ordinance taken out or, or have the ordinance come back to us? Um, that's on what Debbie just brought up. Andrew?
Uh, I'm not sure, Madam Chair. In, in my head, what I'm thinking about is um folks who are currently living out of their vehicles are more likely to be doing this on a consistent basis and enforcement's hard enough, I think, on it. Um, but I think they'll probably be much less likely to appeal regardless um citations. So I, I don't know that relying on appeals is probably a healthy way to handle this ordinance necessarily yet. Um, but that's just my gut reaction right now and I could be off on that. It just seems to unfortunately impacting folks who are not necessarily able to appeal things like this uh very well to the city.
And, and I, I sort of have a tendency to agree with you on this, Andrew, that I don't, I, I think the health and safety language is, is there to protect exactly the, what you're talking about, people who have no, maybe have no other choice at, at some point to, but to idle in some ways, right? Um, so I'm comfortable personally moving forward in setting this for a future vote, but I want to make sure that if council members need some more time to talk to Debbie or enforcement officers or, or think the Attorney's Office and look at the language, I'm happy to continue this to a few, a further out future agenda. If people, council members feel comfortable, then I'd like to get it on. I, I just would like to check it off the list of things that we need to get done and, and make sense getting done. Um, so how do people feel about moving forward with the ordinance? I'm proposing my own straw poll. Uh, moving forward and putting it on a future agenda item, formal agenda item for a meeting. I'm seeing the majority of thumbs up. Okay. Sam?
Copy that. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Um, council members, we are on agenda item number five, which is our CDBG. Um, I anticipate we'll have hopefully a robust discussion on this. And I have had coffee and water, so I'm pulling an audible and we're taking our tentative break right now. Um, for about just about 10 minutes, if that's cool with everyone, and then we'll come back and dive right into CDBG
The only thing I have to add, Madam Chair, is a reminder that the Public Services section repurposed for some of the council member interests?
Thank you for that question, Cindy. And I'd be happy to identify that for the HOPWA funding and previous allocations, we have, there are no additional funding, there are no additional funds available at this moment from unspent contracts. We
Jennifer, I think we lost you for a second. I did anyway. I don't know if other people did. Okay.
You too. I thought it was my computer.
We got to the part where you said there's no, no funds available. And then you said something after that.
Great. I love technology when it works, but when it doesn't. Okay, so in the HOPWA program, we have, we have not identified any additional funds that have not been spent or allocated to other programs or projects that are available to assist with this $50,000 ask.
So, so all of the money that has been appropriated by the council to organizations has been spent?
In this HOPWA grant, yes, absolutely. And so, yeah.
From all the previous years, huh?
Right, right. Everything, you may recall, last year, maybe a year before, there was a large amount that was brought forward, because we did a huge cleanup effort to make sure that we had captured all of those potentially unspent dollars and provided those to the council to appropriate at that time. So moving forward, because this is a relatively small grant, we don't anticipate a lot of that being able to happen going forward because of that cleanup effort.
Okay. And then are the other programs that are related, you know, there's a group of things that are discussed together. Is there anything in any of the other accounts or have they all been entirely scrubbed to pull up any extra? You did a really good job that one year, and now we're spoiled.
Understandably. So you'll see in CDBG and I believe Home, that there was additional funding that was brought in, because we have continued to do cleanup efforts to determine how much funding do we have from past programs that did not spend all of their funding. And so you'll see in those that there are additional funds above and beyond the grant allocation.
And those have already been recommended for allocation. Okay.
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Tony first, and then I'll go to Chris.
So just, if they submitted a very similar application under CDBG Public Services for mental health counseling, it could be considered in that space, in that very tough decision space. But then they didn't submit an application in that space and wouldn't be fair to consider them in different, if they didn't submit an application in other funding sources. Just want to point that out, in case that comes up related to this application, but other applications as we kind of consider funding.
Thanks, Tony. Chris, I think you were next.
Thank you. So my question's the same as Cindy's, except for what about the other categories other than HOPWA? Was there any leftover funding in there? I thought her question was just about HOPWA, and I wanted to know about the other pools.
Sure, great question. We have identified that on the logs, there's actually a space at the end where it identifies technology. Where it identifies grant award and then the reallocation amount. That reallocation amount is funds from previous years coming forward.
Okay, thank you.
Other council members right now? Nobody, everybody's good. Andrew?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I dropped off for a second. In the Public Services section, numbers 18 and 20, those are for the Miller Resource Center and the Geraldine King Resource Center. They did applications in Public Services and ESG, and they're fairly similar, I mean, a few thousand each off both of those. In Public Services, the Gail Miller Center was funded for $72,000, and the Geraldine King wasn't funded for anything. And then in ESG, the Geraldine King was funded for 30, and the Miller was funded for none. And it doesn't quite sort of balance out. So give me a sense there about how that worked between those two, those four applications, essentially two areas. It sounds like it was sort of an effort to keep them made whole as much as possible between the two applications each, but it didn't quite do that, so.
Sure. So I can kind of speak to the process that our resident advisory board, for the, for these two, these applications, this would be the CDCIP Board, doing their final recommendations. They were going down the list. They know that the Miller, that the King was funded last year. They knew that they were most likely going to be awarded the ESG grant as well. And so their concern was that the Miller would not be getting anything, because they were kind of, you know, you kind of see on the list where it kind of gets cut off at a certain point where the funding runs out, once they go down the list of the highest scoring applicants. So then they made the following decision to fund the Miller in the remaining amount, which ended up being about 72, and then knowing that the King would be getting possibly recommended for ESG funds. And I apologize, I'm kind of speaking in behalf of that board, but that's a very quick summary of their decision process, which we've captured in notes. And of course, we can always share that with council.
Yeah, I was a little confused based on the, excuse me, the combined CDCIP scores, which didn't necessarily reflect the allocations. And then between the two, it wasn't sort of an equal amount given overall. That's why I was a little, because it seemed like pretty similar applications from the use of the funds on both sides. And then the score didn't seem to reflect toward the allocations either. So generally in here, the scoring reflects the allocation for the most part.
Is there anything that you would suggest changing on that, or just a clarification?
I think it's a clarification, number one, Madam Chair, because we rely on sort of the scoring to help us understand that. And with similar, similar applications, it's always hard. I get it. It's sort of, it's hard to sort of follow up the score and it doesn't reflect the actual allocation of funds to some extent. It gets a little hairy to make it as clear as possible for us in the public. So that was my question in there. If there's other, if there are other mitigating factors that would factor into the recommendations here. That was really the question, I guess. If there's notes or things that would help us understand it in a horrifying detail.
So Council Chair, yes, we are, staff, we are happy to follow up with the notes from that, the CDCIP Board meeting where those are captured.
Great. Other council members?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dan?
Staying on that same area, the Public Services, I know those are always the most hot topics. And last year, we shuffled a few funds, because I see a couple of programs that really impact some people that are not getting funded this year. And I was just looking at some of the, and I'm looking at the big picture slides. This is the Catholic Community Service, English Skills, Road Home, Shelter the Homeless, and the In-Between. And they all have some specific needs, and they're not asking for a lot. But I was looking at, are people open to the idea of trying to fund some of those at the minimum level of $30,000 and pulling funds from some of the other programs to support them? I really look at the homeless, standard for meals, the Vincent de Paul's overflow shelters, and they impact a lot of people with just a little bit of our money and how we can provide some support for them, but also still continue to support the other programs. And that would be, I'm looking at, you know, if you did all five of those, that'd be 150 that you'd have to find somewhere else. Or maybe you break it down to say, okay, we can't do five, we can do, you know, four, and take some money from the other programs above them that didn't get funding. And of course, you know, this is kind of going to the staff side of the house. If they're looking for someone's salary or something else, it's not easy. It's not just easy, like you can just spread a peanut butter from one area to the other, because that doesn't always work that well with, with funding. Because hey, you need $30,000 for this program, and 25 isn't going to get you. Or you need 40 for this program, 35 is not going to get you there. So I'm just looking at, to open up the ideas of possibly spreading some of the funding down to those five areas.
I guess my question would be, where are you finding 150,000?
Well, I was looking at the transit passes. How well, how well is that program working? Some of the other ones, you're taking a few thousand dollars off the other ones. And I don't have a firm answer here, because I, I can't see, if you took 10 off of one area, how would that impact that one area that we're already funding? You know, if you took out money from the advantage services, if you took out 10,000 from the advantage services, how much does that impact that advantage services? Or the peer support? Or the domestic violence? If you took out 10,000 from that domestic violence, does that drastically impact them? And would that impact be more useful at being homeless? With the meals? I'm just, I'm just throwing out those questions here.
I can work with hand staff. I can work with hand staff to identify each of the Public Services applications that are recommended for funding above $30,000. And return with impacts if the council were to reduce those to the $30,000 minimum. And I can certainly work with Council Member Dugan to go through those individually and see if he has preference to prepare for the next council discussion, instead of trying to figure that out here in the meeting.
I think that would be helpful. I think, Dan, one of the things to remember is that unfortunately, that Public Services is capped at 15%.
Right.
And, and so everything that's in that little box is the full 15% is what I remember Ben saying. Is that right, Ben?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I totally, I totally understand that. I'm just looking at some of those things and saying, hey, is there a way to provide funding for one or two of these things or all of them without seriously impacting the ones that were funded?
Yeah, perfect. Andrew? Oh, sorry. Andrew, real quick before you, Jennifer, did you have a response as well to what we were talking about? I saw your hand. Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
I mean, I empathize with what you're saying, Dan. But it's sort of handpicking folks who are scored lower down based on other criteria is problematic as well, because you could go and say, everybody who applies gets 30,000 kind of deal, or as close to that as we can. Or we handpick a few that, for whatever reason, stand out to us individually. I think it leads us down some interesting policy discussions there. The other piece I would think about is, the details probably matter in the notes that the staff might have about the impact you're talking about. And it would dramatically change the nature of what we're doing by lowering those amounts across the board for everybody. I think the other piece is just the scoring system. This is based on the priorities we set. And if we're not going to follow the priorities we set as closely, I think we need to have that discussion about those priorities in our one-year, five-year plans. I think that's, that discussion sort of goes into what we're talking about here. Because, yeah, I can look at all these programs, and I'll say I personally know probably almost every one of them. So it's hard for me to look at those and say no or yes. But it's a big policy discussion. I think it leads us down.
Madam Chair, I'm fully on board with you, Andrew. Totally agree there. And that, that's why I'm just saying, if there, if there is funding that we can still get what we need off the one program, but we can still provide something for another program. That's all. So.
Appreciate creativity. Darren?
Yeah, and I have a question, and maybe it's best if I ask for a small group meeting or something, because it might take a while for me to understand it. But I guess I look at the scoring and I think, okay, well, it makes sense. We generally funded the ones that scored the highest. But I have no clue how the scoring works. And it might just be because I'm the new guy, or maybe I just wasn't paying attention. But is it, like, for instance, does the scoring account for things that like, like programs that just won't happen if we don't fund it here, that don't have like another source through the state or through Blanche, Blanche P. Community or something like that? Is there, is there like, is that included in it? Because I'm just wondering, I guess I would be interested in knowing if some of the things that we're not funding, are they're still going to happen just to a lesser degree because they're funded elsewhere? Or if we're, if we don't fund it, they don't happen at all? And if that's part of the scoring, I guess I just don't understand how that sausage is made. I'd be interested in a little more information.
Jennifer, do you want to take on that answer?
I am going to, I am going to try, but if my computer freezes, then Tony is on the hot seat to jump right in. And Council Member Mono, I would definitely welcome and open the, or welcome the opportunity to have a small group discussion, so we can dive into that more. And we certainly look at a wide variety of things, both on the staff side as we look at applications. And then our board looks at different criteria. Much of what we look at is, is how well is the program performing? Have they had any issues? Any audit issues? What is, what is their reliance upon federal funding? Because we don't want to fully fund anything, because we know that these funds may not be existing year over year. And then we look at how well are they meeting the goals and the outcomes of the consolidated plan? How well is it meeting the goals and the outcomes of the needs of the community? So it's pretty robust. I think all in all, there's about 15 or so questions that get asked and scored upon. I'm happy to walk you through that. I think you're absolutely right. It's a lot of information to probably cover in this forum. So we definitely open, open that up to anyone who would like that.
I would just add, the scoring is private for the board members. So they score based on their individual assessments. And then they kind of have a meeting that reveals the combined scores and have another discussion as a group to determine if those combined scores match what they each expected, or if they think there are missing factors that they should take into consideration to adjust the funding recommendation.
Does that help at all, Darren?
I think so. So it's a somewhat subjective process. Is that fair to say, that each individual member chooses how it scores based on priorities and, and certain goals?
There will always be some subjectivity to it, but we've tried to minimize that where we can. But yes, there is some.
Right. We also do a lot of training with the boards too, and provide them with rubrics to basically say, this is what a score means. If it is meeting such and such criteria, you know, you know, try to give them a guide to, and try to break it down as much as possible to, to help provide them that guidance as much as possible.
Thank you. Council members, other questions? So I have a question on the Youth Resource Center Security Remodel and Upgrades. And I recognize it doesn't fall under the sort of transportation goals, but that does say it's our neighborhood improvement section of the funding. section of the funding. And certainly upgrading a security system and doing some remodel on, um, the homeless youth resource center that's down there on, what is it, Fifth West and Sixth West, maybe Fourth West and Eighth South? Um, would add to that neighborhood improvement? Is there any way to, if not, if not this time to figure out a way that maybe it fits within our goals, next time to work with them on an application that would fit within the goals? Because I do a lot of volunteer work down there, and I can see the need for both, for both the remodel and a security, um, upgrade, especially as we sort of, we're going to see more people in the area, and I think for the safety of the youth as well, right? Obviously. Um, so I'm wondering why they didn't totally fit within our criteria of neighborhood improvement, their application? Uh, because it says not applicable or not eligible, sorry.
Sure, Council Chair, I can answer that. So unfortunately, their requests, uh, don't actually align with the consolidated plan. So it's, we didn't write the consolidated plan or didn't make it into the consolidated plan for that type of repairs, or even a small business or uh, a nonprofit to do those types of repairs. We did make sure that it gets in there for transportation. And again, these are CDBG neighborhood improvements, so. And then we have the target map that then covers transportation and, uh, the facade program.
Okay. I mean, I get it-ish, and I know it's not your fault, it's the federal government's fault, but with, with making us define a consolidated plan and then having great projects that then suddenly don't fit within this very well thought out consolidated plan, right? Because things change, but maybe there will be another opportunity to fund that, that very much needed improvement for the Youth Resource Center. Um, other questions on CDBG? Anna?
A question, um, for Cand at the CDBG housing portion. Um, there's two programs. One is a small repair program, and then the housing rehabilitation and home buyer program. What's the difference between the small repair program and the housing rehab, since it also has repairs? Um, associated with it?
I'm happy to jump, jump in if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, so the small repair program is really looking at households, um, typically seniors, those that are disabled that have repairs that are necessary, that are less than a thousand dollars. Many years ago, and I'm, if I freeze, if I freeze, Tony's going to jump in. Um, many years ago, we had a handyman program, and they left, and, and now we have been filling that gap of providing these really small services for, um, and it could be things like repairing a door or fixing a, a leaky faucet, that sort of thing. So they're very small, and they're grant in nature, and, um, they're just really quick fixes to prevent a much larger problem down the road. Our, uh, city housing program that is focused on rehabilitation is much larger in scale, goes up to usually 40 to $60,000. We are seeing construction costs increase, so we are seeing much larger projects lately, and that need, need assistance. But those are, are generally much, much larger projects. Does that make sense?
Those are loans or are they grants, like the, the $1,000 grant?
They are loans. They are low interest loans. They can be incredibly, um, flexible in their repayment, so, uh, we certainly tailor it to the homeowner.
And is there any restriction, I mean, is there any restriction on who can apply for these loans?
I mean, Yes, because it's all federally, because it's all federally funded, 80% AMI and below.
All right, great. Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other hands. Quick and easy, eh? I think that we did have a couple of questions that we can, um, come back to, uh, the April 20th. Is that when we're coming back to this?
April 13th with a vote on April 20th.
Great. Um, I was trying to think if I had any other questions, but I don't have any other questions at this time. So I guess if there's no other questions, we can move on to the next agenda. I don't think everyone will be looking forward to another briefing. And, uh, the mayor's remarks tonight at our formal meeting and a public hearing on, um, the, this plan and recommendation, and then another briefing on the 13th. With that, thank you, Tony and Jennifer, and for all your work, by the way. Um, with that, we will move on to, uh, item number seven. We're skipping our tentative break since we already took it. And we are going to be talking about the accessory dwelling unit annual report. Um, uh, we have Allison Rowland. Nope, I see Nick Tarbit. Is it Nick or Allison?
Mad Chair, sorry, it's Nick, but we're actually just turning it directly over to Nick Norris. But when I saw his name was there, I felt really left out, so I just wanted to say hi, and that, um, Nick's going to do a great job.
Thanks, Nick Tarbit. In that case, Nick Norris, it looks like it's all you.
So I sent a presentation. I guess someone's going to load that. And that'll make it a lot easier for me here. Um, and you can go, go to the next slide. So this is a summary of, um, the ADU ordinance since adopted in 2018 and how it's worked, but I wanted to quickly recap some of the history of ADU, recent history of ADUs in, in Salt Lake. Um, first, you can see these on the screen, so I'm not going to go over much of this, but basically this goes back to 2012, when our first ADU or specific ADU ordinance went into effect and what happened. And the big takeaways here are, one, the original ordinance didn't really produce any units. And two, it took us four years to get that ordinance updated. Next slide. Uh, recap of what the key issues were when we were going through that four-year process. Um, owner occupancy, parking, the appearance, um, a general sense of crowding, overcrowding of neighborhoods and privacy. Next slide. Uh, some of you may remember that we actually did a forecast uh, early in 2018 about what we could expect from the ADU ordinance with the regulations as proposed, and, um, we base this on ADU, the history of ADUs in other cities and what they had seen when they had similar regulations to what was, um, what is now within our current code. Um, and so what we predicted were basically, we'd get about 27 ADUs per year uh, for every 30 conditional use applications required for an ADU. It would be the equivalent of almost a full, uh, full, of a full-time employee. Um, and because the number would be so low that we really wouldn't see ADUs contribute to addressing housing needs of the city. Next slide. So what we've seen, um, a total of, in 2019 and 2020, the numbers are pretty much the same. You can see we had 24 conditional use applications in both years, and then nine or 10 permitted this amount to basically um, 0.08% of a, of all single-family homes in Salt Lake City. So we have roughly 42,000 single-family homes. Uh, the pictures are one that were, one that was an ADU that was built under the current ordinance. Um, and at the rate we're going, it'll take 12 plus years for 1% of the homes to have, um, an approved ADU. That's not built on approved ADU, um, on, on their property. Next slide. Total built, so this is not just approved, but actually constructed or in the process of being constructed. So we have a lot that are under construction, 21, um, 17 that are, and these are has of the end of 2020. Um, 17 that are in the permit stage process, and then nine completed. One of those completed is shown here. Um, I think one of the important things about the pictures of the completed ADUs that are in this presentation is, many of them you can't tell are actually there from any sort of, from the street or, um, other, other places except from the immediate neighbors. Next slide. So here's some general characteristics, um, 2019. Trying to remember which one is which here. One of those is 2019, and one of them is, oh, there we go. The one on the right is 2020. Um, the one on the left is 2019. This gives you a general idea of what, of some of the characteristics. Most of these are, for example, the, the detached, um, types of things. So they're generally less than the, um, square footage allowed for detached, so they're allowed up to 50% the footprint of the home, or not to exceed 750 square feet. So most of them don't exceed that. But most of them are really close to being the 50% of the, um, square footage of, of the footprint of, of the home. They're under the, most of them are under the permitted height, and as you can see, at least in 2020, most of the ADUs are not second stories above, above the garage. Most of them have one bedrooms. Um, and most of them, one of the, one of the main changes between 2019 and 2020 is that in 2019, three out of every four ADUs have their parking on-site, and it's almost uh, opposite that in 2020, only, um, roughly 33% of them, 30 to 40% of them have, have the, um, parking on-site. Next slide. As far as location, um, you can see the biggest, biggest concentration of them are in District Five, um, centered around Liberty Park. I think this was a little bit of a surprise to us. Mainly because these are generally smaller lots, but people are being fairly creative with, um, where they're going. And I think it's also important to note where ADUs are not being applied for. In particularly, even though, you know, district, there, there's different reasons in different districts. But District Three and District Six and the eastern part of District Seven, where there was a lot of opposition to uh, ADUs when we were going through this process, the four-year process, um, have seen very few ADUs built. That's mainly a reflection of most property owners don't actually want to build an ADU, and I think that's something that people are forget, is that the property owners have to make that conscious decision to, to do it. Next slide. 67% of the ADUs are within what we've identified as a, um, a, a job center or commercial district, so we're not really looking at the smaller, um, commercial districts like Ninth and Ninth or Fifteenth and Fifteenth. These are kind of the major, uh, districts. Uh, most of them are within a 10-minute walk, which is a, a good, a good thing. Next slide. Uh, some of the things that we've heard that make it difficult to build ADUs, these are on, these first slider are things that the city doesn't really control. Um, but like I said earlier, property owner has to want to build an ADU, and most don't. Most property owners are not at all familiar with the construction process or have even never obtained a building permit, much less one to build a brand-new structure that isn't something other than a shed or a garage. Um, construction costs, so I think, I think everybody has heard how, um, in, construction costs have increased, particularly the cost of materials. That's also impacting ADUs. And then finding somebody to actually build it, um, has also been a challenge. Next. The city barriers really, I think, can be, um, broken down into three different categories. There's the fees, so that includes everything from the application uh, costs to the impact fees, um, to permit fees. Um, trying to, trying to comply with all of the building and fire codes has been challenging for some. Um, the fire code really is an interesting one, because we have so many deep lots and, and under the fire code, the ADU has to be within 150 feet of the street, basically, because that's where the fire trucks can park, and many of our lots are deeper than that, and so people haven't been able to, or to comply, they have to put it closer to their principal dwelling, and so that's been a deterrent. Uh, there's not much that we can do about that, since those are adopted at the state level. Um, and then we have the zoning. The zoning is something that we fully control, obviously. These are some of the most common barriers that people have indicated. Um, the conditional use process really adds uncertainty, and so people are unwilling to invest the money in coming up with plans and going through that process without knowing, uh, what the outcome will be, but I, I will say that every single conditional use for an ADU has been approved. Um, in fact, when it comes to conditional uses, we are on a 10-year-plus streak of approving conditional uses, so we've gone more than 300-plus conditional uses approved in Salt Lake City since our last denial. That one denial that has occurred in the last 14 years, um, never was actually established to begin with, so. Um, we, we don't know when the last conditional use that was denied was in Salt Lake City. The owner occupancy has deterred some people who own rental properties from seeking, seeking this out, um, and also from, um, doing it themselves, and they, they are unsure of their long-term plans to occupy a, a, um, building. Some of the building design elements have been challenging to, um, comply with. Everything from windows to decks and patios to stairs, um, are all regulated, and that it creates some, some issues. Setbacks are preventing, um, existing structures from being converted, particularly adding second stories. That gets, goes along with the reuse of existing garages. Next slide.
Nick?
Yeah.
If, if, uh, if all of the conditional uses are being granted, why does that make it harder? Just because it delays the time, because they have to wait for the approval, or?
It's so, yeah, so, one, it adds time, and time is cost, so they, they can't, a lot of people have told us that they haven't been able to necessarily, uh, depending on how they plan to finance their unit. Um, they haven't been, they either haven't been willing or able to, um, secure that financing and still go through with that conditional use process. Most conditional uses right now are anywhere from 90 to 120 days, uh, for approval, so three to four months, depending on, um, the, the biggest factor is whether or not applications are complete and plans comply with all of our requirements, and because they have to produce plans, there's certain upfront costs that they don't know if they're going to recoup, and so they, they tend to shy away from, from it. Um, so that, that's the primary impact that the conditional use process has.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to talk really quickly about, uh, state legislation that passed this, this last session, uh, that deals with internally to use, so these make these permitted uses in, in the city. Um, we can't regulate that size of an interior, and this only applies to internally to use. We can't regulate the size of an ADU inside. We can't regulate the total lot size unless, uh, we, we could, cities could potentially prohibit um, ADUs on lots less than 6,000 square feet, and we can't, uh, require street frontage. Next slide. Uh, so here's a big list of the things that we can regulate. Uh, so because we have major universities in our city, we can limit them to, um, we can prohibit them on up to two-thirds of the land in the city. We can regulate the external appearance. We can require parking or the loss of any parking. Uh, we can require licensing, and we can prohibit and enforce, um, short-term rentals, and eventually lean the property, and I already mentioned the 6,000 square feet. Um, next slide. So this will require some code updates. This bill goes into effect at two different times. So the zoning provisions go into effect in October. The others start, I think, on May 5th or 6th, but. Um, so we, for our code, we're going to have to separate what an internal and external ADU is by definition, and within the land use tables. Um, we're going to have to delete the max size for internally to use. Are, we want to update the registration process, so it's ma- to make sure that it incorporates everything that the state law, um, allows us to do, so that then we can utilize the, um, enforcement, the enhanced enforcement, um, tools that the, that the bill provided dealing with short-term rentals, um, and potential leaning of property. Next slide. We don't plan on prohibiting ADUs on some, yeah.
Quick question. HV-82, you just mentioned that HV-82 provided enhanced enforcement by allowing a lien on the property, right?
Yep.
But would we as a city be able to do that to external ADUs?
I don't believe so. We'll have to check on that. But I think because the, well, yeah, I think it only applies to internal. So, but we can certainly look into that to make sure.
Okay.
So what we don't plan on doing is prohibiting ADUs on some percentage of the land that the code authorizes because that opens up those equity issues that we discussed back in 2018 about allowing them in some geographic areas and prohibiting them in others. We don't plan on prohibiting them on lots under 6,000 square feet because that would eliminate virtually all of the R1 5,000 zoning district from being able to have an ADU. And we don't plan on changing our parking requirements as a result of the bill. Next slide. Wanted to quickly touch on a couple of best practices, which are kind of loosely identified in that, in the annual report for 2020. And these best practices are from, from those places that have a longer history of addressing and regulating ADUs and the processes that they've gone to through over time has they've essentially start with a fairly restrictive ADU regulations. And they, they scale those back because they realize that ADUs really aren't having much impact. And the fears that people thought were going to happen are not happening, happening to the same degree. So quick, simple processes are always important when it comes to any kind of land use development. If that is, if the goal is to achieve certain desired develop, types of development, the quicker and simpler those processes can be, the better off. And that gets to the next one, having an easy to understand process. Some of ours is pretty confusing, particularly the registration process. The fewer the design standards, the better. Some of the, the ones that, the ADUs that are built in Salt Lake City, like I said, are generally not visible from, from the street or barely visible from the street. They tend to be tucked behind the main home. And so from a design standard perspective, they're not really impacting public ways, which are one of the reasons why we have certain design standards. And the other piece of it is when the principal building, the single-family home is not subject to, to, to design standards. It makes it a little problematic to have an accessory building subject to different design standards. And then making it easier to convert and expand existing buildings for ADUs. So that, there's a lot of reasons for that. But oftentimes it's pretty, it, it's not that a challenging to convert a garage, particularly if it's unfinished, to support an ADU other on top or as in a horizontal addition. Next slide. So some of the things that we've learned is the, you know, some of the things that stop cities from implementing best practices include, one, lack of political support, lack of community support. ADUs continue to be the most controversial items that go before the planning commission. So there's a lot of, a lot of people who, who don't want an ADU near them or next to them. The time to process changes to best practices. For example, we went through a four-year process to update our ADU ordinance. And that's a deterrent for many cities from, from changing their process. And then kind of this desire to, to what I call reinventing the wheel is not learning from other places that have already gone through this and implementing their history and what they've done and repeating the same types of, of things that that have already occurred to prevent ADUs from happening. If it's, if ADUs are going to be a integral or a potential part of the housing, addressing housing needs and issues, then they have to be easy from, right off the bat, or else they're like we have demonstrated with the numbers that we're getting, they're just not going to make a meaningful impact. And I believe that might be the last slide, but yep, that's it. There's my presentation.
Thanks, Nick. Darren has a question.
Yeah, Nick, I just one clarification. You said there were 33 ADUs in 2019 and 34 in 2020, but then the next slide said that nine have actually been built. Can you clarify what those numbers mean?
Yeah. So the, the 33 and the 34 are the number that have either been submitted a, a conditional use for approval or they have submitted a building permit because they're in a zone that permits them. So just as a reminder, and if you're in a zoning district that only allows single-family dwellings, you have to get a conditional use. If you're in a zoning district that allows duplexes or apartments, you don't need to get the condition use because you can already have two units. So.
So the point 08% of homes that now have an ADU are the nine that are built?
No, that is the total that have been applied for.
Oh, not even built. So, yeah, so only point eight, oh, point 08% of ADUs of homes. Okay, I get it. Thanks.
Have an approved ADU.
Okay, got it.
Other questions, council members? Andrew?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Nick, when, when somebody applies for an ADU, a detached ADU and their property, how do we verify it's on your owner occupied?
So there's, so that we, we record a deed restriction on the property. And then they have to basically register. So the registering of the ADU happens in different ways because depending on whether or not it's actually rented, which most of them have not actually been rented out. They're mostly for family members. So it's harder for us to track those registration processes because there's no business license required. And so basically what would happen down the road is that if we, we don't do any sort of proactive look at making sure that the registered property owner still resides on the property. It would be a, just like other zoning violations, it would be a complaint-based thing. Somebody complains, we could try to track down where the owner lives if they live somewhere else. And then we could, we could take the, the necessary enforcement actions authorized under our zoning code.
Second question. It's about ADU construction subsidies or incentive programs. As part of the Non-Mine CDA, we were required, the RDA at least was required, and I'm guessing it's a part of the city perhaps too, is required to have an ADU incentive program for that? Is that something that's a joint effort between the RDA and the city? Or do you know anything about how that's proceeding?
I don't know how that is, is proceeding. We haven't been involved in, in that aspect of it of the, of the financial incentive.
Okay.
I'll just take what I know, which is that this is actually the first budget year that that funding goes through the RDA. And so if it shows up, it will likely be in the RDA annual budget, which I think they're putting together right now.
Okay, I guess my, I really like the recommendations, frankly, council members on this one. I, I think a lot of the things that are in our current ordinance, which we approved a couple of years ago, are just unenforceable and probably aren't contributing to a positive effect on here. So I, I like the recommendations. Frankly, I think I'd love to see us take this up as part of our housing, sort of housing bills. The improvements, number, set a goal, number one, if we're going to use this for housing, what's the goal? The zoning barriers? And then let's look at, yeah, let's look at the barriers we set in there to make it, I don't want to make it a problem for neighborhoods, but I don't think some of the stuff in there is a problem. I think it's a barrier made it happen too. Just my two cents.
Thanks, Andrew. Darren?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think the recommendations for making this process more simple and more accessible to people are good. And I think that we should move that direction. Two various, two specific things that just in my experience as an architect, I see are, are really, just don't make any sense to me are the requirement that the ADU, if it's detached, be shorter than the principal dwelling and 50% of the footprint of the principal dwelling. That basically, and that, we have a lot of small houses in Salt Lake City. And I think the point of the AD ordinance is to allow for infill to be done in a way that doesn't harm the neighborhood character and is behind the primary dwelling. But those small houses may be on a really large, deep lot that could support an ADU. But because of those two ordinances, it's only allowed to be used on properties that already have a relatively large house. So if you have a 700-square-foot footprint house, which a lot of Salt Lake City houses are, 800 square feet, you can only build a 300 and 350-square-foot ADU, which just doesn't make any sense to me. And then the shorter than the prime, primary dwelling restriction makes it impossible to build an ADU over a garage unless you already have a two-story house. So I don't understand how we have zones that allow two-story houses, but just because that particular lot doesn't have a two-story house on it, we're saying you, your ADU can't be that way. Those are two specific ones, I think, are barriers that are, people look at that and don't even come to the city to ask about it because they immediately know that they can't build it. So I think they're barriers that the city probably hasn't even identified because those homeowners look at our ordinance and immediately know it's not possible and don't even come to us to talk about it. But they come to architects and I hear about it. And I say, I'm sorry, the ordinance doesn't allow you to even consider it yet unless you attach it to the primary dwelling. So I think those are two, two additional ones that, to me, are pretty important for us to readdress.
Thanks, Darren. Chris? Anna, did you have something as well? Okay, after Chris. Yeah.
I am, I have a little bit of concern about eliminating the conditional use, just because that was critical, I think, in helping a lot of District Three residents understand that this, and there was that extra oversight to ensure that, that this wouldn't like fundamentally change the neighborhood or concerns about undoing efforts in the past to, to protect the historic character of the avenues. But I still would be willing to hear, and well, not just the avenues, sorry, in multiple historic districts. But I am open to like considering those discussions and, and wondering if there is room somewhere for an alternative to a conditional use permit so that we can still address that ongoing concern. I think that it's, it's been great to be able to have this this policy or this, to have ADU citywide. But I do still have some concerns along that line. And I'm happy to, to meet and talk more offline, but I just want to voice that concern.
Anna?
Yeah. So pulling up, up on what, what Darren was saying, Darren is like, the people that reach out to me as an architect and ask me about it, I explain to them. I'm sure there's a lot of people that cannot, you know, have all the funds to, you know, to hire architects to answer these questions. And I think that raises a question about equity and, and in our processes and the accessibility to, you know, to, to understand exactly how to build an ADU. Maybe there's a language barrier. Maybe there's, you know, a lack of expertise on, you know, on wanting to build something like this, but maybe, and I'm not sure how to solve it. I'm not sure if it's at the planning division level, or maybe it's at the building services level where we, if we're going to make this easier, then let's look at also add some language accessibility and make it easier for regular folk that would like to add an ADU to their house, that it's easier for them to understand and maybe save some money from, you know, going through an architect. And in term, and then what Chris said about the avenues and the question of use, I don't, I mean, it seems like we haven't had much success overall on the amount of ADUs built. And even, even the ones I have applied for in ADU. So are there still lingering concerns? You know, in District Three that, I mean, are, are they funded? Have, have the ADUs built been in the, in District Three and there are a lot of issues with them? That's where I don't understand what the concerns, the lingering concerns are.
The concerns are that, that especially in the lower avenues in the historic districts, that it's already so dense. You know, the blocks are a lot smaller, the houses are all a lot closer together. And so it, so there's concerns about adding to that. And I know that there haven't been that many additions to ADUs in the avenues, but also a lot of avenues homes already had ADUs, mostly, most of those are, are attached. But a lot of avenues homes already had ADUs from previous more permissive zoning in the past. So I think there's just concern that, you know, we want to have a balance of that where there where the ADUs are available and there's an option there, but we don't want to see the, there, there's concerns about whether the neighborhoods can accommodate the, the kind of growth in ADUs that you might see in like District Four and Five. And that's starting to impact either the, that just sort of impacting the character of the neighborhood. And so, I mean, those are the main, those are the main concerns. But I mean, if you look at how, how dense some of these neighborhoods are, like it really is not quite comparable when you talk about adding a structure to a backyard in District, in, in the avenues versus adding to a backyard in another area of the city where the plots are just by nature bigger.
Could I add that maybe there aren't as many ADUs in District Three because property owners don't want to build an ADU in District Three? I don't think it has anything to do with the ordinance that we already passed. We, we addressed in some ways these concerns by the conditions that we put on it when we passed the ordinance. And so to Nick Norris's point, it, there, there's, we're not seeing more ADUs because property owners have to decide to build an ADU, right? I have a couple of other comments, but I saw James's hand. So go ahead, James.
Yep, Madam Chair, I was just going to point out that exact same thing is that this is private property owners that are, it's their own home. It's not renting. It's, these people own their home. If they want to build one, they will decide to do that. They'll decide to go out and hire an architect. And who's to say, Darren, and I'm gonna throw it right back at your high prices, man. What if they said, hey, actually I'm not building it because my architect is too much, you know, he's too expensive. So I'm just gonna, my turnabout is fair play. We always hear it's always us, but maybe it's not, you know?
Thank you, James.
Because the ordinance is so complicated that we have to figure out all these ways through it.
Any other comments? Like other council members? I just had a couple of comments. I really like, first off, I want to say thank you for putting together this report. It was incredibly helpful and just like very public-friendly, which I appreciate. And I really appreciate the improvements section. I think, you know, I mean, we can definitely add amending the ordinance to future conversations and maybe that will happen in another four years, the adoption. I'm just kidding. I think we could probably get there sooner-ish. But I do think there might be some policy questions here that we could address sooner than amending an ordinance. And for me, that would be this consideration of allocating funds to the pre-approved construction plans. One of the things that I think Nick brought up, and it's sort of in some ways goes to the, the banter, the friendly banter between architects and, and the city is that it costs money for people to, for the conditional use process to have somebody draw up a plan and, and design it and do all of this and then take it and have it approved. And if the plan isn't what the approved is, and then go back and redraw it and come back. But if there were already this source of pre-approved This source of pre-approved. Construction plans where. Somebody says, okay, my mother-in-law is going to move in and we need to build an ADU and you go to the planning, you know, the planning department and it's like. Picking your first tattoo. You flip through the book and decide which one you like, and then it's already pre-approved. And so you know that you're gonna cut down on. Those. That that timeline, which of course will then decrease or help decrease hopefully the the construction costs. Um, so I I think that that is a policy question that we could actually look at. Um, much sooner than trying to amend this ordinance, just given how long it took. Beforehand. Um, and same with the the funding and ADU construction program. I think this improvement. Or recommendation sort of goes to on a saying is that maybe the people don't feel like they have access, but perhaps there would be. Uh, some funding source or a loan program or something like that that we could start to look at. So. If somebody and and a lot of our larger lot sizes do tend to be, I have a lot of larger lot sizes here on the western side of Sugar House, right? Um, but those are. I would say occupied by. Maybe a little bit lower socioeconomic class at times. And so you'd be able to help people. Um. Participate in that infill that that we're talking about with some of these things. So those improvements. Number four and five, I think are actually policy questions that we could address. Much sooner and had an impact on than some of these other longer term ordinance amendments that maybe we do need to look at, but are sort of a long term thing. Um. Couple of my thoughts. So I I I mean, I'd be interested in your thoughts on on looking, and we can talk about this later, um, looking at those two items. As bringing them up in a policy, a future policy discussion and bringing them up with admin and kind of maybe looking at some funding um for those two things. Um. The, the other thing, though. Nick Norris is the um enforcement. So I know um that you and several members of your team and of zoning have been contacted by. Several of my constituents in a certain area in my district where um the there have been ADUs built. And they are being run as Airbnbs and it has been documented pretty. Pretty well, pretty well. Um, I'm pretty sure you have the Google Drive with all of the pictures. Um, and it is in an area that according to um. According to the comp report is a high crime area. And so my my neighbors are experiencing. Short-term rental uses um. Turnover day in and day out of this area and have done quite a bit of research to show that this. The owner is actually a development property, property development group. Um, that own four other ADUs throughout, I believe, Salt Lake City. Um, and so I think we, and and it was part of why I brought up the question of whether or not we could put a lien on property. If um they're not, if they're in some way violating. The rules of this ordinance, if they're um external ADUs or internal ADUs. And and to be fair, I'm not sure if the ones I'm. I'm talking about are external or internal, but I'm sure you would have the answer to that and you know what I'm talking about. But the bigger question is, how are we enforcing that? And what can we do to enforce that? Because this is one of the things that was brought to us as a concern by constituents. Is that we were going to create these and they were going to be run as Airbnbs. And unfortunately, I think that is what we're seeing. And if we're going to. Try to lift some of the restrictions so that we can have ADUs with the intent that we get affordable housing or increased housing stock. Um. Then we need to figure out a way to enforce this short-term rental, the the. To the short-term rental issue. And I don't know that, I know you probably don't have all of the answers, Nick, but I'm looking to you with all, for all of the answers.
I I you're right, I don't have all the answers. Um, but how we currently are. Enforcing them. So basically, it it has to, because we can't use solely use the act of advertising. A short-term rental has the means for enforcement. Um, we have have to rely on basically us testimony and evidence provided by neighbors or we have to camp out and. For ourselves and talk to people who are coming and going from a short-term rental and get that evidence. We have. It is very time consuming for sure, and I'm sure that the Civil Enforcement Group would could provide way better answers to this than I can, but. We have had some success in enfor- in enforcing on some of those. Um. But it is time consuming, it is challenging. One of the benefits of of HB eighty-two is that it refer. At least in, and it is internally ADUs only that we can do this, but it does. Remove that restriction on using, on relying solely on the um. Advertisement of a short-term rental for enforcement in an ADU. So we have a lot more tools for the internal. I think that it would be um, you know, it's. Long term, I think it would be great if the state could actually authorize that for externally to use as well, because it is an issue. Um, and maybe that's a next, a next year legislative thing that that we can, we can work with. Uh, people to to address, but it probably also comes with. Other cities being able to willing, willing to lessen restrictions, right? And so I think moving forward, we have a lot better tools than we do now. For the internal ADUs um in that that the that the ability to lean the property is absolutely huge. Because it it gives us a different tool than just. Finding them whatever twenty-five dollars a time or whatever it is and putting a notice of non-compliance on their title. You know, because that doesn't really deter people or encourage people to correct a violation, especially when there's a financial incentive to pay that twenty-five dollar. Fine or whatever it ends up being.
Bonneville City makes violating a an ordinance like that a criminal offense, so we could uh look at doing that. Darren?
Uh, I have just clarification with the new state law. Are we allowed to use? Those better enforcement tools of of short-term rentals on. Illegal ADUs or it's only if somebody actually goes through the legal process of. Registering it as an ADU that we're then allowed to use those tools?
You know, I'm. I'm not completely sure about that, but I would imagine that if somebody is operating an internal ADU without approval. And we have a ordinance that addresses that, then we can use those tools. So give them the opportunity to bring it into compliance and. But um, yeah, I would think that we could still, we could still make that that case that they're. Uh, operating an ADU as a short-term rental without uh required approvals.
Well, I'm in favor of using those increased tools where we can.
Council members, do you have any other questions about this? Andrew?
I think it's, thanks, Madam Chair, I think it's in love with the talking about I. Enforcement isn't just about ADUs and we've got so many pieces of our code that mean enforcement. And. Similarly, there's so much time spent by planning on conditional use approval. Um, we've talked this year about all the ordinance we want to see, all the. Growth kind of struggles we've had and the things we need to sort of keep working and refining on. And we don't have the, I don't think we have the capacity to do it all. And so I think as a council, we have to come to some idea about. Um. How much we're going to enforce or how much time and effort we're putting into that and the nature of our ordinances to enforce and. The conditional use process period. Um, and I I don't want to be reckless about this, but. We're not going to get much farther than we allocate resources for these things. So. Uh, I think there's some choices we're gonna have to make budgetarily about where we spend our money and. Um, staff, the number of staff in these departments, how much we're authorizing them, asking to do it. Uh, those kind of things. And then the consequences of that as well for um. How we're how we're enforcing, because. If it's on a um, on a complaint basis, um, that's going to lead us to all sorts of equity problems, I think. We could address that as well. So I I think it's a deeper issue. I'm not opposed to enforcement, obviously, we need to enforce. But I will hear this discussion sort of frequently over the years about lack of enforcement on all sorts of levels in the city. And inability to get things done because we want to oversee everything. And I think at some point we have to let something go perhaps a little bit or make some trade-offs, much interestingly.
Thanks, Andrew. Okay, thank you, Nick. Thank you to the team. Again, I thought this. A great presentation um and information for us to to view. So, thank you. Sorry, I'm opening up my agenda. I have like four electronic devices going. Um, we are on agenda name, agenda item number eight. The Learned Alley Vacation. And at the table, we have Brian Fulmer and. Lanning, but I will turn it over to Brian first. Hi, Brian.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. This alley is located between North Temple and Learned Avenue and west of Tenth West. It is between a restaurant fronting North Temple and four single-family homes on Learned Avenue. The alley is approximately one hundred eighty feet long, sixteen feet wide, and is primarily used as parking for the restaurant. And the homes on Learned Avenue. The applicant owns all properties adjacent to the subject alley, and if approved by the council, the alley property would be sold to the applicant at market value. It should be noted, there is a north-south alley that is not part of the proposal, and it would remain open for pedestrian use if the east-west alley is closed. The applicant is in the meeting and would appreciate an opportunity to address the council. The Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation to the council to vacate the alley. And now I will turn it over to Aaron Barlow from Planning.
Good afternoon or evening, council. Um. I think I sent the presentation and it should be coming up shortly. Um, here it comes. Um, this is actually Riley's presentation, but I will use it. Um, as, oh, there it is.
There you go.
Uh, this. You can go on to the next slide, man. So here's a aerial of what it looks like. The blue properties are those owned by the applicant. The red is showing where the. Alley is. Um, since Brian's covered, you know, most of the technical details, I just want to speak specifically about the recommendations from the Planning Commission. If you go to the. Last slide. Um, specifically, they spoke about these homes adjacent to the property are going to be displaced with the proposed development by the. By the applicant, that that it will come through a separate application. This is not part of this application, but. Vacating this alley is in some ways um providing city resources to facilitate this property. And so the Planning Commission wanted to address, wanted to address the fact that these homes are. Can be considered naturally occurring um affordable housing, as you have discussed in the past. And they provided a recommendation that the applicant work with you to address the displacement of these homes and explore. Um, additional affordable housing in the pro- project. Um, besides that, the commission gave a positive recommendation and I'm I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Aaron. Council members? Darren?
Is that legal for us to do to um make an alley vacation contingent upon providing? For affordable housing units within the project?
That is a question for Paul. Um. I'm not sure. Um, we we talked about it at the Planning Commission and they were concerned about it, but as far as a planning commission recommendation, that's okay to do, but we weren't sure as far as this step.
Is Paul or someone from the attorney's office here? Might be able to answer that question? And if not, we can get to.
Hey, so um, I I'm from the attorney's office, but I'm unable to answer that specific legal question. I'm trying to get in touch with Paul right now. To see if he might be free to answer that. Uh, and if not, certainly that is something that we can answer and get to council as soon as possible.
Thanks, Mark. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I'm sorry, I don't have that answer.
No, none of your problems. Cindy?
Um, I mean, one place to start at least, and we can wait for Paul, but one place to start is that. The alley vacation is entirely at your discretion. So um if you, I I would think that there that if you're going to make that public policy move, you can consider. Um. The ramifications of of um of that and and that type of a thing. So you have entire discretion on this matter. Um, we'll see if that extends, though, to do as far as um you might want it to. But that's where I'd start is that this is an entirely discretionary act.
I think Mark's on the phone, so we'll give him a chance. Um, but any other questions from council members? Okay, I will turn the time over to the applicant. We generally give applicants uh five minutes. To address the council and then, of course, if council members have any questions for you. Um, we'll open that up afterwards, but welcome, Jared, and I will turn the time over to you for five minutes. Thank you.
Um, can you hear me, Riley? Or is it on?
Hi, Riley. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. All right. I'm gonna start off and then Jared will finish it. So uh first off, thank you all for your time and for uh meeting with us and fitting fitting us in. We know how busy you are, so I'll just go through it as quickly as possible. Um, all of the, uh, well, actually, can we put up the presentation? Is that possible? So you all can see what we're talking about. Um. Or no? Well, I'll start talking. Um, if there's a way to put up the presentation, that would be great. Um, so as Aaron had mentioned, there is uh the the alley. Uh, there you go. Everything in blue is the parcels that uh we currently own. Uh, the alley is the yellow box with the red line around it, obviously. Um, that alley uh is currently uh and has been being used for the last twenty, twenty-five years that we're aware of um by the restaurant and one of the houses. Uh, there is uh parking strips actually uh painted onto the asphalt and has been being used by the restaurant. And then one of the houses uh. Actually accesses its garage uh through on the back of the home uh through the alley. So um. Other than that, that's kind of the gist of that, if you don't mind going to the next slide. Um. Housing loss mitigation, as you had, as Aaron had mentioned before, I I mean, just real straightforward. Uh, one of the houses, the first house on this uh. On this portion uh of homes was brought to us by a partner, a guy that I knew. Uh, he brought it to the table and kind of got the ball rolling. Um, so it's his home. He introduced me to the neighbors and then um, you know, I kind of took it from there. Uh, the next home that we got was actually a vacant home. Uh, it had no heating, uh, no uh duck work or HVAC, no furnace, uh, so borderline condemnable. Uh, we did put someone in there temporarily. Uh, the neighbors talking to the other families on the street. Uh, they were very concerned about the homelessness challenge in the area and the specifically the houses to the south that were vacant. Um, with people breaking in and and living in those. So uh we were trying to accommodate them, so we cleaned up the house to a level to where we could get someone in there temporarily. Uh, and they lived there while they could. And then we, uh, you know, when they moved out, we provided them with some uh money for moving. Uh, and you know, and they they went on their way. Uh, the other homes, we worked out different arrangements with those occupants. Um. Uh, one of them, ironically, the sewer had broke underneath the house, the sewer main. Uh, two months before the lease was up that we had worked out with them. Uh, so we paid them additional funds. To to move out a little bit earlier. It wasn't worth the time and the cost uh to, by the time we would have got a contractor in there to fix it. Uh, had that completed, they would have been moving out anyways. So uh, so, yeah, we worked with each of the, each of the homeowners and occupants in that way. Uh, we, on average, probably paid each one uh thirty thousand dollars, about thirty thousand dollars on average uh to move out. Uh, you know, to cover, and that was to. to move out, you know, to cover, and that was to cover moving expenses, deposits on new homes, and, you know, a little extra for their time and for the hassle. You know, that's the pretty basic, straightforward, you know, how that was done. One of the houses, the individual did have a home that they were interested in. So we offered to track that down and try to help them purchase that. It was owned by, it ended up being owned by the city. The city wasn't interested in selling it, so, you know, we went back to him and informed him of that. He didn't require or want any help finding anything else once that specific property wasn't available. So that was the extent of the help that we provided with that. So, yeah, that's how we helped each of the occupants of the homes. And if you go to the next slide, Jared can take it from there.
So my name is Jared Hall. I'm the architect on the project. So some of the benefits to the city of vacating this alley is like you're trading what is essentially a liability to the city of this piece of property to property that will then generate income tax or property tax revenue for the city. Currently, the alley as it exists has no overarching benefit to the city. It ends, it does not continue to the west. It just is a little short dead-end alley, and as has been mentioned, has not had use lately. The buildings around it that we are proposing are being built as per right in the TSA zone. So not being able to build in the alley would create a small dead-end corridor, which we are concerned would become a magnet for crime in this area. And if you go to the next slide really quick? This is just kind of a site plan of what we're proposing, having one building that extends from North Temple down to Learned Avenue. This allows us to keep a high parking count, which in every public meeting I've had with residents of the area, they're always super concerned with sort of the low parking that TSA allows. We're well over the minimum allowed, so trying to help the neighbors.
Madam Chair, sorry, that's a five-minute time.
Okay.
And I'll end.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate both of you being here. Are there questions from council members for either, for the applicants? I don't see any hands. Mark, did you have any update on the question that was asked by Councilmember Mono?
I believe Paul was able to join us. I just, I thought I just saw his name pop up. Paul, can you?
I'm here, and I apologize, I hadn't been in the meeting yet. If you could, I understand the question relates to conditioning the vacation upon demolition. Is that correct?
I think it's conditioning it based on providing affordable housing within the project, which is what I understand the Planning Commission suggested.
Yes, we can. It's just all about the mechanism of how we go about doing that. We'd have to write it into the ordinance as a condition. Yeah, we can do that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is a pretty big policy discussion, I think, because do we have any precedent? And how do you do proportional, sort of, this alley increases to this much affordable housing kind of thing? Is there anything currently that we go off to talk about that? Or is this just brand new? We're gonna spit on, you think?
Sort of sounds like we're spitballing.
Sorry, this is Wayne in the Planning Division. I'm not aware of us. Actually, there are planning commission recommending this before. Nor in my time dealing with alleys have I seen that we've actually done this. I believe that there's been conditions on alley vacations in the past on, you know, certain properties getting certain, you know, percentages of alleys and things like that, but I'm not aware of this. This is definitely, it was new ground for us while we were working on this, but we thought it was an important thing to at least bring up to the council as a recommendation.
Well, Madam Chair? Let's jump into it. I've met with Riley quite a bit on North Temple for a number of things, and I'm supportive of the vacation, and you know, I'm supportive of more affordable housing, period. I'm wondering how much time and energy would take us to find a mechanism. I'm a little hesitant about doing a precedent-setting thing here. Unless we have some good rationale, we could transfer forward a bit. I'm just not sure if we got, who has the bandwidth or the ability to figure this out.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it is, yes, you haven't specifically done this before, but it's very common for you to to make a requirement when you are doing something that is discretionary, especially something that's directly tied to the public interest. So I think we could figure it out with the attorney's office. If you didn't want to do it now in this case, you could ask that it be included in the mitigation study to create a mechanism to allow for things like this. I think they might be able to fit it in there, but I wouldn't want to stand in your way of doing it in this case because you clearly have the authority.
My question was, I think the applicant wasn't able to finish their presentation, but are they already planning to or have any interest in providing affordable housing? Or is that a hard no for them?
I can address that. To be completely honest, I'm completely new to that topic and that going down that route. I've reached out to the RDA, email and phone calls. I've left several voicemails. I haven't had anyone contact me back yet, and I'm sure they're just overwhelmed and busy, just like everybody is. I would love to chat with someone to discuss that, especially on future projects. I have been meeting with Andrew several months and understand the needs and the concerns of the neighbors in the city. On this particular project, we're far enough along with everything regarding, you know, our financing or capital partners, the structure of everything that it is. And a no for us on this project, whether we did one big building or whether we broke it into two. Either way, it's gonna be a no on this one. But I would love to talk to someone and learn how to do that for future stuff. Yes.
Madam Chair, I'm also with Andrew. I'm comfortable moving forward with this project as is. I don't want to see it bifurcated. I think I'd rather see this project done in its complete because it is North Temple. It's a sensitive area. And for me, this is a project that, you know, would maybe stem some more opportunities for projects in that area for affordable housing. So I'm all in favor of moving forward with this.
Great. Any other council members' comments, questions?
Madam Chair, I like Cindy's statement about the existing mitigation ordinance work happening and wrapping this particular scenario into there. So we do have this discussion going forward, whenever we have city assets of any sort or other housing loss.
Just another tool.
Great. Okay, well, we are setting the public hearing date today at our formal meeting. And that published comment hearing date would be May 18th with tentative action on June 1st. Thanks, everyone, for joining us, and thank you to the applicants for being here today.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
With that, we will move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is the Fern subdivision alley vacation. And I'll turn the time back over to Brian Fulmer from the council office.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This alley is located between 10th East and 11th East and between Wood Avenue and Logan Avenue at approximately 1600 South. The north-south alley segments are approximately 126 feet long and 10 feet wide. And the east-west segment is approximately 336 feet long, but seven feet wide. There are several encroachments into the alley, making it impassable, and the casual observer would not notice that the alley even exists because of the encroachments. I believe the applicant is in the meeting and available to answer questions if you have some for her. Planning Commission forwarded a unanimous positive recommendation to the council to vacate the alley. And I will turn it over to Anna Anglin.
Hi. So this alley, as he was saying, is just not existent outside of it being on paper. Both of the arms of the alley are used for driveways mainly. There's a fence line that is on the north side of the alley all the way through from one side, from the west to the east side. The thing about this alley as well, hello, is that all of the properties to the north and to the east, or the one property to the east, are not on the subdivision. So all of the alley would go to just the people who are in the Fern subdivision portion of it. And so right now, that's kind of how the fence lines are set up as it is. Can you guys hear me? Okay. My presentation either, so.
Yeah, I think we have a presentation as the visuals.
Yeah. Okay. And then all but, so the alley no longer exists, and there's all but two of the owners that needed to sign, property owners that needed to sign the petition did not. One of them, I believe I talked to, it was, this is kind of an older application. So that was a couple of years ago, and they just had some questions on, you know, what would happen if the alley was vacated? And basically, nothing, because it's already set up. Like, the alley has already been vacated, because it's, like I said, the fence line is to the north of the alley and follows that along. And let's see, let's go ahead and change the, so here's, okay, so here is the alley. As you can see, if you go back one more without the green line on it, it just shows that there are several properties. I guess that floating line, I had it set up so that this line would float in, and you could see where, you know, there are structures that are in the alley on several of the properties. So, and there's one that shows it as well. So it's, yeah, and, yeah, it's already set up where the, everything is. The alley doesn't exist anymore. Let's go ahead and change the slide. And here again is the original subdivision plat showing the alley arms and just basically the parcels that were included in the alleyway. So let's go ahead and change the. So this is the north-facing, or this is the alley at 1019 East Logan Avenue. That's the arm. Basically, some of 219 and the neighbor directly beside them kind of share this, but most of it goes, is being used by the 219 East Logan Avenue parcel. And then, I mean, there's trees already planted in the alleyway. There's a pole there. And then over on the east arm, if you want to switch the slide, is basically built in as well. The alley is actually probably more closer to the grassy area. Some of the cement area is in the alleyway. There's also a utility easement with publicly utilities in this alleyway as well that would need to be recorded once the alley is vacated as an easement. And then let's go ahead and change the, and then this is just demonstrating that the alley, the fence line, is pretty consistent on the north side of the alleyway. Let's go ahead and change. And then the alley vacation standards, it's lack of use. It's no longer in there. That there isn't really going to be any community purpose left. There's no way to, like, you know, maybe use it as a walking path or anything like that. It would probably disrupt the homeowners along the alleyway if we did that. And that's the end of what I have to say. So planning staff recommends that, and the Planning Commission did recommend a positive approval to City Council for the Fern subdivision alley.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions, council members?
Madam Chair, so the utility easement runs the length of the alleyway?
No, it's just on the east arm. It's along the east arm of the alleyway.
Not along.
Not along the north, yeah, the north portion of it.
It looks like we have the applicants here. If the applicants would like to take a moment, you don't have to, but if you'd like to take a moment to address that application, then we are happy to let you do that.
Actually, we don't have anything to add from Anna's statement. However, we're here for questions.
I don't, it doesn't look like there are any questions. I don't see any hands up. So this, I believe, is on the same timeline. Brian, are we on the same timeline for this?
Yes, Madam Chair, you are. It's on the consent agenda tonight to set a public hearing for May 18th, and then there's a potential council vote on June 1st, just like the other one.
Perfect. Thank you so much for being here with us. Thank you to our, to Brian and the Planning Division, and we will be back on the 18th, May 18th, that is.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is item number 10, which is a written briefing. I don't know if there are any questions from council members on the written briefing. Ben, there is one thing. I thought it was a great brief. I think in the future, if we could add districts to it, I was looking at it and just, sometimes it's helpful to see kind of where, what districts the streets are mostly in. And I didn't notice that in this, but that was the only thing that I was thinking about when I was reading it.
Thanks for the suggestion. I'll follow up with engineering on that. I do recall the reconstruction of local streets rotates between council districts. So some years, it's focused on a couple of council districts. The next year, different council districts. So all of the council districts will receive approximately the same amount of funding. So all of the council districts will receive approximately the same amount of funding from the voter-approved streets reconstruction bond. I don't know off the top of my head if the transmittal identifies those years and those districts. So I'll, I'll check with engineering.
Okay, Andrew.
I agree, Madam Chair. I think it was a year ago, two years ago, Ben, when they did the initial presentation, had it broken down really well about these districts this year, these districts this year. If they just took that and sort of superimposed it, it might work quite well for this.
I do remember that breakdown. Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Okay, everyone, do we have a report from the chair or vice chair? I don't think I have anything. James, do you have anything? I'm getting a head shake. No. Do we have announcements from our executive director?
We do not.
Excellent. We have no closed session today. With that, good work, team. We, our work session is adjourned. We will be back here at, at seven o'clock for our formal meeting. Thanks, everyone.